It's six o'clock, we will consider ourselves in session. And, the indication?
Say with me.
Okay.
Is my microphone on?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, pray with me please. Dear Heavenly Father, grant us the wisdom and discernment as we work through these agenda items tonight. Help us to be objective and fair to all concerned in doing what is best for Kerrville and its citizens. Amen.
Now, Pledge of Allegiance.
Oh, you okay?
Pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, good evening to everybody here. We're always happy to see everybody here. Um, just got three announcements tonight, so let's get right to it. If I can bring the first slide up? Maybe I can't. There it is. That's our second slide. Alright, I'm sure I don't have to tell any of y'all, but it's very, very hot outside. And, uh, the effects of the heat are finally beginning to show. Uh, this morning, the city moved to stage one water restrictions. Uh, that allows for homes with odd numbered addresses to water with hose end or automatic irrigation systems from six to ten p- excuse me, six to ten AM and, um, eight PM to midnight on Tuesdays and Saturdays. And even numbered addresses can do the same on Wednesdays and Sundays. There's a few more details. This is actually a screenshot of our page on the website, so, uh, if you have any questions or details, if you'll go out and just click that, uh, "Learn More," it'll take you right to the, um, to the ordinance. Alright, and just as I admonish everybody to stay in out of the heat, we have the seventy-third Annual Heart of the Hills Tournament, which starts this week. This is a great event, uh, kicked off this morning at Scott Schreiner Golf Course. I'm not sure I'd want to, want to be playing golf over the next four days, as hot as it is, but, uh, you got a lot of diehards out there and they're, they're a lot of fun to hang out with, if you get a chance. This is a four-day best ball event, draws teams from all over the state to Kerrville, which we love to see. Uh, on Monday, at the top right there, you can see some sponsor representatives from Krenwolke Motors, Heart of the Hills Committee, Cecil Actison Motors, and Ken Stople Ford Lincoln. They all showed up to, uh, continue their support of this long-running event. So, if you see these guys around town in the evening, they're probably gonna look a little tired. Say hi to them, make them feel good. Uh, you can- I'm sorry?
Give them a bottle of water.
I'm sure they're gonna need it. You can actually keep up with tee times if you want, uh, and, uh, the flightings on our website. And, the last announcement, Back to the Movies is back here on Friday night. This week, we are at Kerrville Schreiner Park. The last two weeks, or the last two movies, we've been out at Louise Hayes Park. This is our first of two events back-to-back at Kerrville Schreiner Park, so please make note of the change. Uh, this is a flashback to the nineteen-eighties. Back to the Future is our picture. I think it's nineteen eighty-five, so it's been thirty-three years since this movie came out. I remember it like yesterday, which I probably shouldn't say, because it kinda dates me. Uh, but bring your family out, bring chairs, blankets, uh, this is always a great time. Sponsored by the Calo Foundation, like I always say, there's free popcorn, so y'all come on by and, uh, have a good time. If you have any information about it, uh, you can contact the Kerrville Parks and Recreation Department. Alright, thank you very much.
Thank you. Before we go to our Citizens Forum, uh, I've, I've realized that when you come to a city council meeting, you're seeing pieces of a puzzle, one step at a time. Resolutions, dealing with ordinances, debt, budget, et cetera. And, all of that goes somewhere. And I'll tell you where I dream and hope and pray it goes. And I wrote this down, because I wanted to remember it. And I've said it in different settings, in different ways. Together, we're building a great city, where people have safety and security, people have opportunities, and they get to live in a beautiful place known for kindness. That's what, uh, I hope we are seeing, one step at a time, one piece at a time. Alright, Citizens Forum. So, opportunities for individuals to speak, um, if you've indicated that, uh, but not to an agenda item. Alright? Okay, uh, then let's move on to our presentations. Beginning. Do we, do we pass over somebody? Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, thank you.
He's wanting to wait to be called, right?
No, it seems to be polite.
That's good.
But every now and again, you gotta just speak out. Uh, Bruce Strickey, six fifteen, Earl Garrett. It's been a while since I've been here, it's been too long, 'cause I had people call me since the last meeting and say, "Why haven't you come and talked about how great Kerrville is?" "'Cause Kerrville is a great place." And then, part of that is because the council's before you, and because of things you guys are all working- I'm sorry, you all, men and women are all working on now, together. And that is really wonderful, to see you coming together and work on things. And what is really exciting is that not only are we seeing people talk about community, but we're seeing people talk about residential and commercial development, which I have not heard for years. And I'm really excited about that, and that is looking at, not as much redevelopment as we may wish, but some new development, and, in the residential side, and redevelopment in the, in the commercial side. But again, that is because of the setting that you all placed for us, to go out and sell Kerrville each and every day, which is all I do. And I just wanted to thank you all, because this is the best place to live in the Hill Country. Thank you.
Thank you, Bruce.
Okay. Anyone else in Citizens Forum? Okay, now we move on to some presentations.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'll go first. I'm Mark McDaniel, City Manager, and it's my distinct honor to recognize some of my staff here this, this evening. Um, I'd like to ask Amy Dozier and Julie Smith to come on up. Amy, um, uh, who is first coming up here, is our CFO, and she's been in that spot now for about, what, six months? Maybe three? Okay, but doing a fantastic job. And then Julie Smith has, uh, is our new Assistant Director, which is the position that Amy formerly held. So, tonight, I'm, I'm here to talk about the Distinguished Budget Presentation Award. Uh, when I got my start in government thirty years ago, it was in the, the Budget Office, and, uh, became a reviewer for this, this program, and I know how rigorous it is. The city has received this award now thirty-three times, uh, in a row, and, uh, which is a big deal, because if you look at the number of folks that are participating, it's only, it's only sixteen hundred entities that have received this award. And that means not just cities, but counties, hospital districts, and school districts, and the list goes on. So, it's a pretty, uh, big honor. The document that we put out each year, and we've already started budget workshops, has got to be highly, uh, of high quality in four areas. As a policy document, as a financial plan, as an operations guide, and also as a communications device. Uh, so it's not just a bunch of numbers, there's a lot of information there, uh, and an explanation about how it all fits together. It's online, so, uh, it's pretty easy to navigate, uh, and find the information that you're looking for. So, uh, Amy, I just wanna congratulate you and your team, uh, for receipt of this award. And so, let's just give her a big round of applause.
You dropped the mic.
It rolls off their American face, so.
There you go. Huh? Yeah.
Is Don Barnett here? Uh, we have recognition tonight for Don for his service on the Planning and Zoning Commission. And, since twenty sixteen, it reads that Don Barnett, we recognize for outstanding service as a Commissioner on the Planning and Zoning Commission, and that on behalf of the citizens of Kerrville, as well as for ourselves individually, we wish to express our sincere appreciation for contributions to the city and the community. And signed by the City Secretary and by the Council.
Thank you, Don, wherever you are.
Yeah, right, yeah, Ross Robinson, if you would come up here, please. Ross has served on our Recovery Community Coalition, uh, and the resolution says, "Whereas Ross Robinson has served faithfully and dutifully on said board, now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the Kirk, City of Kerrville, Kirk County, Texas, that Ross Robinson be recognized for his outstanding service as a member of the Recovery Community Coalition, and I, and that on behalf of the citizens of Kerrville, as well as for ourselves individually, we wish to express our sincere appreciation for his contributions to the city and the community." And it is signed again by the City Secretary and by the City Council. Uh, Ross, would you tell folks what you do, what your position is here?
Good evening. I serve as the Executive Director for Hill Country Mental Health Developmental Disability Centers, and we are a local mental health authority. We're not a state agency, as many people think. Uh, we are actually a unit of local government and a five oh, with five oh-one C-three status. Uh, we serve nineteen counties and twenty-three thousand square miles, providing, uh, assistance to individuals with serious mental illness, and youngsters with serious emotional disturbance, and folks with intellectual and developmental disabilities. And, we work very closely, uh, with Chief Knight and, and, uh, his officers, and our county officials, uh, with Crisis Intervention Services. And, we also do numerous other things, including disaster response. So, we have sent teams, and, after unfortunate incidents such as Santa Fe recently, uh, Sutherland Springs, uh, some of the floods and wildfires that we have. So, we provide trauma assistance and relief, uh, in those organizations. But, we very much appreciate, uh, serving in Kerrville and serving the citizens of our community and also of our county.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Wanna get a picture? At this time, we move to consent agenda, and these items would be voted on together, uh, unless a, uh, member of council asks one to be pulled.
I, I would ask that A, B, and C be pulled.
Okay. So, A, B, and C will be pulled. Alright, and, do I hear a motion on items four D and four E?
I, I would make a motion that we pass, uh, D and E-
Alright.
-as presented.
Okay. There was a motion and a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Elaine?
I don't seem to have a motion button, so.
Second, uh-oh.
Anyway.
Okay.
I can be verbal, though.
Yeah, that's true, alright. Okay, uh, all in favor of D and E, if you'd let it be known by voting through the system?
She not joining?
You okay?
No, she's, she's not set up down there. I don't know.
Okay. And the vote is five oh. Uh, let's return to four A, Financial Update for the month ended June thirtieth, twenty eighteen.
Good evening. And your packet tonight, um, have a financial update, um, year-to-date through the end of June. Um, we've already spent a lot of time talking about numbers this week. But, I'd be happy to answer any questions that anyone has on the information that's presented.
It's not so much questions as much, well, some of it's questions. So, um, I don't wanna, kinda, beat a dead horse, but, a few months ago, we kinda put a scare into the public about a shortfall that we had in our budget. And, um, you know, we've been reporting it as not being as bad as it first, we first, first thought. So, just wanted to kinda rehash-
Sure.
-that aspect of it.
Yeah, I can go through some of that. So, um, in particular, um, we've been talking about sales tax, and sales tax was coming in under budget for most of the year. And, in the spring, we were looking at if we continued on the same trajectory as much as a two-hundred-thousand-dollar shortfall in revenue for just the sales tax line item. Um, we have had some good news, starting in May, and then again in June. So, in June, um, our sales tax was actually up nine point three percent compared to June of twenty seventeen, so that was very strong. Um, we saw increases in the retail, construction, and wholesale categories. Um, it's especially good that we're seeing retail increases, 'cause that's the largest portion of our sales tax. Um, and we actually have already received sales tax for the month of July. We don't have, you know, full July financial statements yet, but in July, um, sales tax is up eight point three percent. So, another strong showing in July. Um, so, we are, um, we're definitely happy to see this news. It still looks like that we will have a shortfall for the year. We're not gonna be able to make up all the ground that we lost, um, but it doesn't look like it's going to be as bad as what we initially thought. Um, so, for example, if we, um, are up four percent compared to the previous year in August and September, then we'll have about a hundred-thousand-dollar shortfall because of these strong months. So, we'll have to see where those months, um, come in, but it's looking better than it was a few months ago. And we are seeing, um, you know, broad increases in multiple categories, so that's good. So, looking at where we're projecting to end the year, we think that, um, revenues are still gonna come in under budget, but expenses are also gonna come in under budget, so we think we're gonna be okay. Is that, um, does that basically answer your question? Okay.
I, I'll, I'd like to talk to you later, 'cause-
Okay.
'Cause what I was seeing is if, if our sales tax, you know, keeping up with what you've been giving us, if our sales tax were in that four to five percent range for the last two months, I was seeing a shortfall about half, half of what you just said, so I'll-
Yeah, I can send you my calculation.
But the other, the other part of it was, um, the overall budget. I mean, we just said the revenues will be a little bit short-
Right.
-and the expense will be a little bit short.
Right.
But, in fact, the, the expenses are coming in quite a bit short, aren't they? So, overall, our, our budget is, we're not coming in under budget at the end of this year, most likely, right?
What do you mean, under budget? Uh, the revenues or expenses?
Our, our, our revenues are gonna end up being-
I think our revenues will slightly exceed our expenses at the end of the year. Um, we are seeing, um, you know, we've had staffing vacancies during the year is what makes up the majority of our expenditure savings. Um, we have done a decent amount of hiring in the last, um, month or two, so, our expenditures during the last couple of months of the year are gonna have more personnel expense than what we've seen previously. Um, but we are monitoring both the revenue and expenditure side closely, and I think we will come in under on revenues and under on expenses to offset that.
Okay.
And on the water and sewer side, just to mention this, our water revenues are coming in stronger than predicted, um, which is not a big surprise, given the heat and the lack of rain. Um, our sewer revenues are a little bit under budget, but that, um, is being offset by the higher water revenues there, so. Anything else? Yes, sir?
So, as CFO for the city, you are telling us to go out and spend money in Kerrville, right?
Yes, sir, that is correct.
Okay. But she's, she's also-
Maybe-
She's also saying, though, for any of the reporters that are here, that the, the big headline that was put out there is, "Two-hundred-thousand-dollar shortfall" is somewhat of a misnomer, at this point.
It, I'm saying it has, um, rebounded. And, sales tax, you know, we've talked about this a lot. Sales tax is a very volatile revenue source. And so, you know, it, um, we had about a seven-month trend going on of, um, of flat, um, you know, completely flat sales tax revenue in comparison to twenty seventeen. And so, we didn't want, um, to be caught off-guard, and we wanted to make sure that council understood that we were managing expenses to counter any revenue shortfall that we might have. And then, starting in May, things started picking up, but from, um, October until May, it wasn't looking good. So, um, we did want to make sure you had all the information and, and knew that if that trend continued, where we might end the year. Um, thankfully, it, things have, um, rebounded on the sales tax side, but it is a very volatile revenue source, so it's hard to know month to month.
And they're gonna be putting Christmas decorations out any minute, so.
That's right. Alright, thank you.
Okay, anything else on that? Do we have a motion on four A?
I'll make a mo- somebody did. I'll second it.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move that we accept four A as presented.
Alright.
Can I second it?
Okay, second. Okay, and it passes five zero. Alright, let's move to the Professional Agreement for Tennis Professional. And, Daniel Rubio is here with us tonight. And, uh, okay. Questions?
Should I just start with my questions? We can do that?
Yeah.
Okay, that's fine. Um, I, I did read it, but I didn't probably read it close enough. Are, are we actually, is part of this requiring certain hours of operation at the tennis center? Was that in there?
Yes, and the pro has the ability to adjust the hours based on their operations, but we don't perceive them changing in, in their current operations that they're doing now.
And so, so this is, this is essentially a pass-through deal, right? So, the revenues that go to the tennis center were, we're not, except for this stipend thing that we're talking about initially, but we're basically paying for the service by allowing him to collect the revenues, right? Is that what we're doing?
Correct. He will collect all of the revenues directly.
Um, I don't have a problem, I'm just clarifying it.
Sure.
So then, um, so then we are doing this stipend thing in the first year, I guess, of the term. And so, this was more of a question to Mr. Hayes, 'cause, um, being that I'm a contractor, I get told that I'm, I can't stay a contractor if the person that is paying me is requiring hours of operation, providing workplace, and, uh, paying a regular fee. So, the question that I have is, are we allowed to do this stipend this way without, and keep it as a contract? 'Cause this is really a contract sort of position, right?
It's, it's an independent contractor-
Right.
-position. And let me go back to the hours of operation, that, that's not in here. I mean, it's not, he doesn't have to be there nine to five or eight to five. So, I mean, he has to do certain things-
Right.
-within the contract. So, you keep that in mind, and then going back to your question. I don't, I don't think that is, um, a problem. Um, and again, it's a, it's a stipend, because we expect and anticipate, um, from staff's perspective, that during the construction period, there's gonna be less traffic and less use out there, so.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify it, as I was reading. So, that was really my only question.
I'll, I'll go ahead and deal, deal with the question at this point. Is it standard to require someone in this position to be a member of the US Tennis Professional Association? But, it's required, but it's not paid?
Correct, yes. To receive their pro status, they have to be a member and be certified under that, that company, that organization.
Okay, alright, okay. Alright, anything else on, uh, on that item? Four B. Okay, do I hear a motion to, uh, pass that?
I made a motion, 'cause I found my motion button.
Oh, alright, good, good.
So, I'll make a motion to authorize the City Manager to finalize and execute an agreement with Daniel Rubio.
Okay.
And I second it.
Okay, good. Okay, let's vote on that.
Oh, sorry.
Alright, motion passes five oh. Daniel, would you please stand and maybe wave at the crowd? His able predecessor at the tennis center is seated next to him tonight. Yeah, thank you.
See what happens when you pull it off the consent agenda? We get to announce the people and everything.
Yeah. Alright, uh, four C. License agreement between the city and Camp Gladiator.
Okay, I'll just ask the question. So, the agenda bill, uh, itself says, city's gonna collect ten percent of gross, and then the contract says it's gonna be five percent of the revenue. So, I was just looking for clarification.
It'll be ten percent. The draft that you received in your packet was initial draft, and it will be ten percent, to be consistent with our other agreements.
Okay. And that's all? I'll make a motion to pass the thing, is-
Alright, I've, I've got one other question.
Oh, go ahead.
Yeah. Gladiator organization is national, they've got like thirty-five hundred or several thousand, whatever, sites around the country. The, where will this happen in the park?
Um, it will likely happen either in the Centennial Field area or the pavilion, depending on what their needs are in the park, but likely in the field.
Okay, alright, okay. Alright, do I hear a motion?
Yeah. Somebody else gonna have to do it now, I guess. I think the line got pulled. Oh.
Okay.
I seconded that, please.
Okay. I, you're seconding, okay, let's vote. Alright, and it passes. At this time, we enter a public hearing. It is six twenty-six, and this is regarding the Legion wastewater lift station, environmental information document, as part of the Texas Water Development Board funding application. And, the community has heard about this, but it does require a public hearing.
Thank you, Mayor Blackburn. Uh, just very briefly to remind you, this is regarding the Legion Lift Station, uh, which we, the city, per your authorization, has applied for Texas Water Development Board funding. As part of that, uh, we have contracted with Freezing Nichols to assist us through that application process, uh, and they have assisted us in putting together the environmental impact document, which has been posted, uh, here at City Hall over about the last month or so. I'd like to briefly introduce Mr. Ben Haywood, who'll very quickly go through a presentation for your public hearing.
Honorable Mayor, Council members, thanks. I, uh, will give a quick overview of the environmental information document that I put together. Um, I conducted the pedestrian survey and put together the draft document, and there are no significant environmental impacts anticipated. The, the site is, uh, previously disturbed, uh, where the proposed lift station will be. And, um, outside of the hundred-year floodplain, it's within the five-hundred-year floodplain, and all critical facilities will be raised above that flood elevation. And, that's one of the things that we were required to, to specify today. There's no loss of waters of the US. Cultural resources, including historic and archaeological resources, threatened endangered species that are listed federally under the Endangered Species Act, none of those should be impacted. So, any questions on the environmental information document?
Just for everyone, everyone's clarification, we're talking about this is, uh, as you come down Legion, you come to the, uh, to the loop. It's across the loop, there behind the VA?
That's correct. Um, we have a little display board, and the Veterans Highway comes down here, and they cross that under the road, and here's the VA at this location. And we've got a photo of the proposed site, it's previously cleared.
Alright, okay.
Does that answer your, your question?
It's essentially next to that, um, drinking drive-through, or whatever the heck that is, or car wash?
Car wash.
That's correct.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, for everyone to know exactly what we're talking about, what does a lift station do?
Well, the, uh, sanitary sewer lines are below grade, and they get pumped up to the reclamation or treatment facility. And so, the force main is the pipe essentially, that it's under pressure, and it will push the sewage to be treated. So, that's what the lift station does.
Okay, alright, okay.
I've got a couple of questions from here.
Well, hang on a sec, though, 'cause, do, do we do the public hearing before we do us, normally?
We're in the middle of the public hearing now, so y'all could ask questions before or after, it's up to you.
Either one, okay, let's go ahead, questions.
I get it now or after the public hearing?
Either way.
Okay. What are we doing with the existing lift stations? Do we have plans for that?
Yes, we do, and that's, um, identified there's an asbestos report and a phase-one, uh, site assessment, and that will be decommissioned and removed.
Okay. And is that boundary, is that the city property, the blackout line? Or is that just the study area?
That's primarily the study area, there might be some temporary construction in there, some staging or whatnot. But, um, so that was the area of the environmental review.
Okay.
And so, right, the, the city will own part of, part of that.
Is there already existing line running- Is there already existing line running up that area? Or are we going to have to get those easements?
I, I don't know the specifics of the easement acquisition.
Okay.
Where we are, but there are lines presently adjacent to that, that green line that you see.
Okay.
Stuart, you have to come in.
I was just curious why we're taking that route, because I know it's a low, low area down in there.
So the, the force main's going to follow, the force main's the green line that they have shown here. That's going to follow in the existing easements that we have. With the exception of around the Dollar, General Dollar, we're going to go out on Loop 534 and come up past them, because it goes under their driveway right now. We don't want to rip out their new driveway to, to make that work.
Okay.
So we're following the existing easement line.
So how far does it actually push?
So it's behind, it's across the street from Back Forty or next to that car wash there, and that, that's where the existing Legion is now, and it's going to push from there up, and it will deliver the water to the wastewater treatment plant at our headworks.
Okay, any other questions? And we'll end the public hearing?
Wait, wait, wait. So we ask if there's anybody in the public?
Oh, wait. Yeah, yeah. Idea, yeah.
But now you have to see if there's.
Okay, well, open and then vote?
Anybody from the public want to speak?
Hmm?
We need to see if there's any speakers. Are there any speakers that have registered?
Are there speakers to address this issue? Okay.
I just want to know.
Yes.
Mario Garcia, nine thirty-four pecan. Who's it supposed to service? What communities, what's it for, that area?
Yeah, I'm going to ask Stuart to respond to that.
Hey. Legion Lift Station services about half of the city. I'm all the way up to HEB area. From HEB over to about where the stadium tanks are on Holdsworth Drive, and it comes down Holdsworth, and meanders through the, the residential area, and then it also serves all the airport. Airport area, and everything this side of the river in that little kind of horseshoe area.
Mario, I was going to say that that part of town is just, is continuing to grow, and the projection is that it will continue, and so this is trying to stay ahead of some things.
Anything you'd like to, be happy to show you up. Not specifically where, where that is.
Okay. Alright. Did you have another question?
Yeah, but you can close the public hearing or ask if anybody else wants to talk.
Okay, anybody else to respond in the public hearing? Okay. Public hearing is closed at six thirty-three.
Okay. Thank you.
And I, I've got questions, but they aren't necessarily for them anyways, so.
Okay.
So the, the public hearing announcement that we had put in the paper mentions, this is more for public information, but mentions the, the rate increases that were, that are going to kind of come with this this project, I guess you'd say. And I just wanted, oh, well, the first question I had is, actually was for the city. It says the document was posted at City Hall. Is there a reason we didn't get that put in the packet?
I'm not sure what your question is.
It's a hundred-and-eighty-four page document, and so it's been posted here at City Hall for public viewing, but we didn't feel like it was environmentally sustainable to put in your packet.
Okay, so, so anyway, so the, the rate increase, so this is kind of getting to the, the thing I like to do. And you've heard me say it, I always like to answer the question of why we're doing certain things. So can, can, can you explain our water sewer debt, that limit thing, the thirty-five percent aspect of things? The revenue to the, the debt service to the revenue, the cap that we've got put on ourselves of thirty-five percent?
Yeah, we can get into that, but it's really not part of the posted agenda item. I don't sure if this is.
Well, is, it was in the public hearing announcement that they put, is, it mentions the rate increases are part of this project. So I'm really trying to explain to the people what that rate increase is about, that we advertised about.
We advertised about a rate increase?
We advert, we advertised about this public hearing, and in that advertisement, it mentions the rate increase of the sewer that's coming in the next three years.
Okay, okay.
And it gave a, an amount.
Okay.
So.
Are you talking about an article that was written?
No, I'm talking about the public service announcement, or whatever we call those things, that we put in the newspaper to announce the public hearing.
Okay, okay. So EA's telling me that it's, it was about, a statement about the amount of debt required, and, and then how that was related to the proposed rate increases. And so at your budget work session yesterday, we went into some detail about how much 1% would generate, what our debt profile was, and to your question about our, our self-imposed thirty-five percent debt cap, thirty-five percent to rev, debt to revenue. And so we remain under that as part of our ten-year plan programming. And one of the projects is the lift station. We also have TTHM project coming up, and then in 2023 and, and, and beyond, we have other projects. So treating it as a full system, you're looking at all your, your debt service costs, but you also have operating costs and so forth. So the rate increase is not just for Legion, but Legion is a component of that.
Right, so just to be clear for the public, that, because it's going to be said that the Legion is, is kind of the reason this rates increase is coming. Part of its operations, but that's actually a pretty small part of this, and a bigger part is actually that we have prior debt in our water system. If we didn't have the, the pond, for instance, that, as we discussed yesterday, becomes kind of unnecessary to service our reuse customers. If we didn't have that, the Legion project would not actually kick us into a need for a rate, a rate increase, would it?
Well, I would, I would argue that it would. What that number would be, would be, we'd have to look at that closer, and of course each year recalibrate, but you, you heard Amy say yesterday that we haven't had any rate increases since 2012. And so during that period of time, we've had cost increases for chemicals, electricity, staff, and so on. And so that's pretty remarkable that we haven't had any rate increases at all for water and sewer during that period. So I think to say that if we didn't do one of the other project, we wouldn't have the rate increase, you know, which project? Because you could choose any one of them, right?
Right, and one, and one's actually, as the mayor has outlined, is definitely a need, the Legion Lift Station. But if we weren't doing the Legion Lift Station and the TTHM, we wouldn't be raising our rates. We wouldn't need to raise our rates. We'd still have them covered, right?
Well, what you want to avoid is a situation where you don't raise your rates for years, and then all of a sudden you pop your residents with a double-digit rate increase. So you need to look at a ten-year period and what you have coming online, so that you have the capacity to keep up with your system.
Right, that, that's what I'm doing. I just wanted to make sure everybody understood. So that's the only questions I have.
Okay, let's move ahead then to item six A, the ordinance first reading, and Mr. Hayes.
Let me go ahead and read the caption for y'all. This is an ordinance deleting chapter ninety-eight telecommunications of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Kerrville, Texas, containing a cumulative cause, containing a savings and servability clause, and providing other matters relating to the subject. And this is about the simplest ordinance that you all will ever consider, because it's a house cleaning ordinance, deletes chapter ninety-eight, telecommunications within our Code of Ordinances. And it's, it's really necessary because the Texas legislature back in two thousand and five took away our authority to grant franchise, franchise agreements to cable and telecommunication companies. And so it's, it's, it's an unnecessary ordinance or chapter within our code, and so we just need to clean it up and, and get rid of it, and that's essentially what this ordinance will do.
Okay.
I recommend approval on first reading.
Alright. You have a motion?
I made a motion.
Okay.
I'll second.
I'd, I'd make a motion that we approve the adoption of ordinance two zero one eight dash one four on the first reading.
Okay. Okay, and it is five oh vote. Open this recess time for the council to recess, related to the convening a meeting of the City of Kerrville Employee Benefits Trust.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and Council. You have a copy of this agenda and the backup at your seat that was placed there earlier. So does everyone have that? Okay. It will be a PowerPoint presentation, and you are now, right now, serving as the Employee Benefit Trust. And for the three new members of council, I want to tell you what the Employee Benefit Trust actually is. It's a chapter twenty, two twenty-two, section two twenty-two dot oh oh two of the Texas Insurance Code. And there's an annual tax in the amount of 1.75% that is imposed on insurers for gross premiums received from policyholders. The gross premiums paid by a municipality, county, or hospital district are exempt from the tax being collected by their insurer if the municipality, county, or hospital district establishes either a single entity benefit trust or establishes, or establishes or participates in a chapter one seventy-two risk pool. In July two thousand and eight, City Council at that time approved a resolution to create the Employee Benefit Trust, and that's what y'all are tonight. The savings to date by establishing this Employee Benefit Trust is four hundred and fifty thousand, six hundred and sixty-five dollars. So it was a very good decision to do that. For our medical insurance for our employees, this will be our sixth year with Blue Cross Blue Shield, if it is approved. They did give us a 1% increase. It was a lot more than that. We did some negotiation and got them down to 1%, so that we did not have to go out to bid, because we got a couple of bids and they were a little high, so, or a lot higher than this. Our rate history with Blue Cross Blue Shield, last year they gave us a 1.5% increase. In two thousand and seventeen, there was no increase or decrease. In two thousand and sixteen, it was a 5% decrease. Two thousand and fifteen, a three, a 3.7% decrease, and in fourteen, a 7% increase. We moved to Blue Cross Blue Shield from United Healthcare in FY14, because the United Healthcare renewal came in at 15%. And all of our renewals, all, all of our bids that we've gotten in the, over the past few years have all been in double digits, so we're happy with these, with this 1%. We have two plans that we offer to our employees, and it's been the same plan designed since two thousand and fourteen. We have a PPO with a $2,500 deductible. Office visits are thirty-five and specialist fifty. We have a prescription, a hundred-dollar deductible, and then our prescription co-pays are fifteen, forty, and seventy. And then we also offer an HRA plan to our employees with the same $2,500 deductible, the same prescription deductible and co-pays. And then on the HRA contriba, contribution, which is a health reimbursement account, we offer up to $1,000 per individual or $2,000 per family. So if an employee has not spent all of their money, maybe they've spent 300 of their money, they'll only get 300 back in on October one. And the city contribution per employee per year, and you'll see P E P Y, that means per employee per year, for FY19 will be $7,034 per employee per year, and we have a one-year rate guarantee. Mark asked me several times, can we get more than a one-year wait, rate guarantee? And unfortunately, we can't for medical, just simply because it's such a, it's based on claims and, and claims are volatile.
Still going to challenge you, though.
I know. I keep trying. So for our proposed budget for FY19, we are, are budgeting $6,500 per employee per year for benefits. Oh, I have not moved this PowerPoint. I'm sorry. Somebody should have told me.
Well, I've been trying to follow along on my.
Oh, Lee, I am so sorry. Sixty-five hundred per employee per year for benefits. That is medical, dental, voluntary life, and ADND. That's what we pay for, for the employees. For the employee only, we pay 100%. It's paid by the city, and for the medical, for dependent coverage, it is, for medical, we pay 60 to 61%, depending on the tier of coverage, and then for dental, we pay 12%. Our voluntary benefits that we offer, there's no city contribution for employee or dependents. And those are our vision, our supplemental life and ADND, and our short-term disability. Tonight, we are going to request authorization to use the benefit in reserve if needed, as we've done in the past. So for the Blue Cross Blue Shield Medical, it's $7,034 per employee per year. For the dental, it's 304 per employee per year. And then for group life and ADND, it's $62 per employee per year, so that brings the total to $7,400. Our anticipated benefit reserve is, if you take, do the math, it's 7,400 minus 6,500 that we'll be budgeting, which is 900, and we have 301 employees, which changes all the time when we get new employees and leaving employees. And that would bring that anticipated benefit reserve to $270 and, I'm sorry, $270,900. Our balance as of six thirty, twenty eighteen, was $462,325. And the benefit reserve that we've used for FY18, nine months into the fiscal year, as of six thirty, eighteen, twenty eighteen, is $79,821. And we estimated using 215,000 last year. That's what we presented to y'all last year, and we're not even close to that. So I don't think we'll get close to the 270 either.
Re-explain that, because I got it last year, but I forget it now. So what, what, what happens there with the, I mean, why does that happen?
Why does it happen? Because we have, when, when people are hired or they leave, we may have someone that we have on staff that has employee and family coverage. And then we may have, hire somebody that only ends up with employee coverage. So it just depends on what tier of coverage that they select. So that's how come that changes. And then some months, we may, you know, it may take a couple of months to fill a position, so some months we may not have any at all, any contribution at all. So again, this will be our sixth year with Blue Cross Blue, Blue Shield. We have a high satisfaction rate among our plan members. Our employees really like the plan, and it is well-received by the area medical community as well. Any questions on the medical? Or the benefit reserve? Councilor, I'm reading.
I, I will say, you have just done recruitment of personnel. Because when people see the benefits
Uh huh.
in Kerrville, you'll probably get some applications from this crowd.
Well, good, good. We have some openings, yeah. Okay, so with, last year with Standard Life, we got a package deal. We went out to full bid and got a package deal with them, and it is for, it began last year, and it's for all of the remainder of our benefits. For dental, they gave us a two-year rate guarantee, and that's good until next fiscal year, so we didn't have to do anything with dental. Vision, another, a two-year rate guarantee. Again, we didn't have to do anything there. Our group life and ADND, they gave us a three-year rate guarantee, and that's good through 2020. And our voluntary life and ADND, and our voluntary short-term disability, they gave us three-year rate guarantees. So we're, are good on all of those benefits. But I will explain them. The dental, we have Standard Life, same plan, same rates. The city contribution toward the cost of dependent coverage is 12%, and that equals 304 dollars per employee per year. The employee contribution is staying the same, and the Standard Life, of course, is the package deal with a two-year rate guarantee. On the vision, it's the same plan, same rates. BSP Network, which is Vision Service Plan, it's very well, well-accepted here in Kerrville. It's a voluntary plan, so there is no contribution. The employee pays the entire amount. It's a Standard Life package deal with a two-year rate guarantee. And then our other ancillary benefits, we got, again, the package deal group life and ADND. Last year, we got a 20% rate decrease, which is why, which is why we stayed with, or we went with them. Voluntary life, there was no change. They met the rates that we had with our previous carrier. And then voluntary ADND, there was no change as well. And then the voluntary short-term disability, Standard Life gave us a 9.09% decrease in FY2018, and all of those, again, have a three-year rate guarantee. My favorite slide, but I'm running out of room on it, so I'm on my twelfth year doing this, so. It's my favorite slide. It shows you everything, basically, we've just talked about, and then all the way through, down through FY2008. Ooh.
Yeah.
So the council action on this. Staff recommends council acting as the trustees of the Employee Benefit Trust approve the plans and rates for the FY2019 Employee Benefit Plans as presented, and authorize the city manager to sign the contracts with the providers. There will only be one contract.
Would you go back to that, the, the, the numbers over the years?
My favorite one, yeah, yes.
Okay. So you're telling us that from two thou, two thousand and eight to twenty nineteen, we see a reduction?
Yes, sir.
And a reduction in dental?
Yes, sir.
And in life ADD?
Yes, sir.
Looks good.
Thank you.
Okay.
Good job.
Thank you.
Okay.
And I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Okay, any questions?
You just need a motion for, and a second from the council, but it won't be in granite, because you can just do the, the old-fashioned one.
Alright. Do we have a motion and a second on this item?
A second.
Got a motion, motion, second here. Okay, all in favor, would you please raise your right hand?
Almost forgot.
Five oh vote. Great, great. Okay, thank you, Ken.
The old way. I'm here for the next item, too.
Thanks for all your hard work.
What?
I'm here for the next item, too.
Oh, yeah, yeah, okay. Oh, yeah, yeah, okay. The consideration, possible action on, well, let me, let me get us out of this. So, we are out of that city council recess and reconvene into regular session.
Okay. This is a resolution number twenty-seven, two thousand eighteen, authorizing the transfer of funds from the City of Kerrville to the City of Kerrville Employee Benefit Trust to pay for employee-related benefits for FY twenty nineteen. And the staff recommendation is to adopt resolution twenty-seven, two thousand eighteen, approving the transfer of funds in an amount not to exceed sixty-five hundred dollars per employee, and then authorize, let us use the Employee Benefit Trust if needed.
Okay. All right. This budgets, the finances, what we just talked about.
Yes, sir.
Any questions?
Can we hear from the, the trustees of the employee benefits? Oh, that's us.
Yeah.
Carry on.
All right, okay.
Do you want to recess and reconvene again?
Yeah. All right, do, do I have a motion?
I made a motion.
Okay, okay, Eichner's made a motion, Segerman, second. All right, let's vote. Five oh.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks for doing that, great reduction work.
Okay. Moving on. Eight B and eight C regarding the Kerr Central Appraisal District. And, yes.
Good evening, once again. I wanted to introduce both eight B and eight C. Tonight, we have Sharon Konstantinidis, the chief appraiser at the Kerr Central Appraisal District, here with us. And she's gonna give you all a short presentation on these two items and answer any questions that you have.
All right, good, good.
Good evening, how are y'all doing?
Good, thanks.
On the overage, our auditors did our audit, and we had a small overage of three thousand, six hundred and twenty dollars left from our two thousand seventeen budget. And the board of directors voted to ask the entities to retain. They had to use it toward our building reserve. We're currently in the process of adding some more store, parking on the back of the building, so that would be used toward that. And the city's portion of that would be four hundred eighty-nine dollars and sixty-six cents.
Any questions on that?
Yeah, let me, that's the one that I, I've been asking questions about this the last couple of years. So, so first thing is, historically, that number, the overage has been a lot more, right?
Yes, it has, especially last year.
Right, so what occurred that happened different this year on that?
We used some of the funds we had to buy the furniture and that.
Okay.
We used it toward the building, moving in.
Okay, and, and the other questions are more about this process. So what, well, first off, have the other entities, who all responded at this point?
The county has approved it. Ingram School, the City of Ingram took no action, which was the same as an approval.
Okay, they're the only two that have responded at all?
They're the only two, yes.
Because, when, when I look at it, I've raised this before, it seems like if, if Kirkad has a, a budgetary need, building reserve, right? Is there a reason they don't budget an amount each year? And instead of doing this, what I've grown to call accidental budgeting, where we're just saying, man, whatever's left over, we'll put it here. Because the way it, the way I perceive it, is the, the number of entities are really school districts. I mean, the bulk of the actual money is, is school districts. And if I have to choose between a building fund for Kirkad versus a school district, I'm gonna vote with the school district every time. But then the other part of this is, instead of doing this voting, this vetoing thing, we do it by number of entities, instead of a dollar percent of, like K I S D and the county in particular are the two biggest recipients. But their vote counts the same as someone who's got a tiny amount. So, is it the bylaws of Kirkad, what is it that created that vetoing rule?
State legislature.
Okay. So anyways, the, those are kind of my issues. Is there, is there a way for, for you to, as a budgeting policy, to actually just start budgeting what your wishes were for the building?
In the budget, we do have a small line item. We used to have seven thousand per year we were putting behind, back.
Right.
And we've reduced it for nineteen to twenty-five hundred.
Okay.
The reason we've ended up with these surpluses is we've had some employee changes and stuff. And that's, you have an employee that's making a higher salary, and you hire someone that's a lower salary, that's a big difference there. And there'll be months that we don't have anybody in that position, you know, trying to hire someone that can do the job.
Okay, all right, good enough, I don't wanna hold it up, I just wanted to ask this question.
All right. Do you hear a motion on eight B?
I make a motion that we approve resolution number thirty dash twenty eighteen, approving an amendment to the Kerr regarding the overage that is displayed in our documents. Any more information than that?
Yeah, okay, and a motion, a second. All in favor, if you'd let it be known, uh, voting? Okay. And that is, that is five oh, um, vote. You know, I'm just gonna, I'm gonna go ahead and say this. I'm a Baptist preacher, and if we had this many five oh votes in the Baptist church, somebody would say amen. All right. Uh, eight C, resolution providing for the number twenty-eight, twenty eighteen, providing for the city's approval or disapproval of the Kerr County Appraisal District's fiscal year budget twenty nineteen, but, twenty nineteen budget.
The budget for two thousand nineteen is at the same of one million, seventy thousand, nine fourteen as the two thousand eighteen was. With the two thousand nineteen, our payments on the building are going up, which was seven thousand, one hundred and four dollars. We did some cuts in some area that, areas to reallocate so that we could keep the budget at the same as last year.
All right. Questions in regard to that?
I just have one question. Judy, are you still a board member?
Yes.
Okay. That's not an issue? Approving their budget? Okay.
Okay. All right. Do I hear a motion on eight C?
I make a motion.
All right.
A second.
Okay. And vocal. All right, let's vote on that.
Amen.
Okay, there you go, another, amen. Sharon, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Well, let's take a look at eight D, execution of a contract for the water treatment plant, uh, equipment with West Tech Engineering, an amount of five hundred thirteen thousand, eight hundred and fifty-two, and E A hoppy. We'll speak to that.
Good evening again, mayor and council. Want to bring this contract for the water treatment plant clarifier to your attention. This is for a contract with West Tech Engineering for clarifier equipment in the amount of five hundred and thirteen dollars, five hundred and thirteen thousand, eight hundred and fifty-two. This essentially was out for bid about sixty days ago. We did receive a competitive seal proposal process, that, we went through that. We received three proposals on July the third of two thousand and eighteen. Two of those proposals had the specified equipment, that equipment manufacturer that was listed within the proposal process. Ultimately, it went through a, uh, review by our reviewers. And those reviewers did rank the proposals, and the best value proposal was found to be West Tech Engineering. So staff recommends that you authorize the city manager to finalize and execute the contract with West Tech Engineering. If you haven't answered any questions that you may have.
Okay, questions?
I got.
Yeah.
I got a question.
Okay.
Where's this in our master plan? Is this coming up to date, or is this, should we have addressed this, or?
Yes, sir, this was shown in the water master plan in the two thousand, let's see, this was the two thousand and twelve water master planning process. It was identified within the community improvement program of two thousand and fifteen. So it's, we've got older equipment, essentially, that, you know, can't be maintained as well as what it could be. It's, it's met the end of its useful life. And so, we are accomplishing your master plan from a few years back.
So we're a little late on this?
Uh, no, it's, it's, it's about in line. Uh, we're just, you know, we're, we don't like to replace equipment before it's due, but it's, it's due.
And why are we not doing the hardware and the installation at the same time, is that?
Yes, sir, there's a six to eight month lead time on the equipment. And so, we felt like the most competitive process, what our contract engineer recommended was to actually split this into two pieces, go ahead and get the manufacturer working on the equipment. And then, once we've got that equipment ready to go, we'll go ahead and hire a G C to install it, do the electrical work. We felt like that would be the most effective method with our taxpayer resources.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions?
Yeah. So, so, we, we had this on our agenda last time, and it was pulled because we got told the, you know, there was a dispute from the, the actual low bidder on this particular project. That, that part's correct, right? I mean, that was why we pulled it off last time?
So it was incorrectly labeled last time as a bid process, and it was not a bid process. This was a competitive seal proposal process. And so, we wanted to make sure and clarify that and bring it back to you. Because there is a difference with local government code, chapter twenty-two, sixty-nine D, and that is the process that we ensued, not a low bid process. It's a best value competitive seal proposal.
Okay, but, but as we had on our agenda last time, what we were getting told was that the, the low bid was disqualified due to evaluation from, was it Freezing Nichols or whatever, whoever our consultant was looking at. So that, that's correct, right?
We had a team of folks that were looking at all of the proposals and ranking those based off of criteria. And again, West Tech was the best value proposal.
Right, and in, in the ensuing time period, we, there was a dispute from, was it Envirodyne, whatever? So, is that, is that correct? I mean, did they lodge a dispute or appeal or something like that?
Yes, sir, there, that was not, Envirodyne listed within their proposal. They had listed a non-acceptable manufacturer within that. So it was included, you know, as a, essentially for comparison purposes within the rankings, but it was a manufacturer that was not acceptable within the specifications.
So the, the manufacturer that Envirodyne had selected was, is the one that was the problem, is that what we're saying? Or are we saying that Envirodyne itself weren't?
There were, there were only two applicable proposals that, that really met the specifications.
Okay, are they done disputing with us, or are they still disputing with us? That's just a, I guess all I'm asking, I'm not suggesting we don't accept these, I'm just asking, are we, are we exposed in any way, are they still in dispute? Envirodyne, I guess?
I, I think we got one letter from them saying they disputed it, and we haven't heard from them since.
Okay, that's all, okay. All right, fair enough, that's all I was getting at.
There was a clarification between low bid process, which we did not participate in, and competitive seal proposal process, which is what we, we did ensue.
Okay.
All right. Do I hear a motion on this one?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, Eichner moves.
I second.
All right, and Elaine Segerman seconds, let's vote on this. Oh. Wait, wait just a second. I need to clarify something. Steve, I have you signed up to speak to this issue, but I'm assuming you want to speak to eight F. Oh, okay, okay. Recovery Coalition. Okay. All right, okay, thank you. All right, let's vote. All right, it's five oh. Okay. Professional Services Agreement for the Public Safety Complex Feasibility Study with Brinkley, Sargent, Wiggington Architects, in the amount of one hundred and thirteen thousand, nine hundred and fifty-six dollars. Folks, on these kind of items, it doesn't get more exciting than this. Go ahead.
Uh, this is just a, kind of the final point. If you recall, back in April, we did the R F P process, or R F Q process, and we received five qualification statements. And then, and, and that was in May. In June, we brought this to you to begin negotiations with Brinkley, Sargent. We've negotiated down to about a hundred and thirteen, a hundred and fourteen thousand. So this is just approval of that contract, the scope is attached. And if you have any questions, let me know.
All right. Did you push a little bit?
Yeah.
If not, do I?
I got a question. Um, how are they choosing the locations for this? Are we putting, do we have input, or are they just coming up and showing us?
So there will be stakeholder input, and there's gonna be site locations chosen based off of the facility itself. First thing we'll do is, is give options for the building itself, and then we'll look at, you know, the, the size that we need to accommodate that building.
So they won't select them, we will as a city.
Right.
We'll tell them which ones we want them to look at.
Okay. Good.
Anything else?
Yeah, I, I pushed the button again, I'm sorry. Where's Guillermo? I finally did it, sorry, where's he at? Anyways, okay. So, no, uh, so this feasibility study is not considering, I mean, it's, we're, we're giving up the ghost on the police station, is that correct? I mean, it's too small, right?
That's correct.
Okay, so, in the, in the study, though, we're doing some sort of structural checking on the current facility, is there a reason for that?
That, that's an, add, add additional services if we choose to go that route. It, it's not anything that's in the original scope. Basically, we, we know that P D has maxed out, and, and that building has.
So we're not gonna waste any time directing them to look at this building, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Just on a need assessment.
We do want them to look at it in terms of potential value in resale.
Okay.
As well as potential use as other city offices, like fire administration or something as an, as an alternative to a complete complex with all of it. So they're looking at best use of this facility, or disposal of this facility, the one that they're in now, and a complete new facility in different combinations of, you know, who's gonna be in the building.
Okay, so, so we are gonna do that even though it's not a public safety complex issue? We're gonna do that under this study, right?
Well, it is related, because if fire administration is housed in there, that's public safety.
Okay.
All right. Other questions? If not, do I hear a motion?
I make a motion to authorize execution of a professional services agreement for the Public Safety Complex Feasibility Study. I second.
Okay, motion's made and seconded. Let's vote on that.
Both are all in.
Okay. All right. A D F, Drew, would you explain to us about the Peterson Regional Medical Center and Sidewalk?
Mayor and council, good evening. Peters, Peterson Regional Medical Hospital is building a parking lot across the street, across Hill Country Drive. This location here, hospital is on your right. And this is, oh. This picture's looking east, this is looking west. Here, you can see where they're proposing that parking lot. They are requesting for a partial waiver of sidewalk construction. The proposal includes the construction of that light blue, additional stop sign along Hill Country Drive, and a crosswalk for pedestrian safety from that parking lot to the hospital. The dark blue portion is the area they're asking for a waiver of construction, since it does not serve the parking lot and does not connect to anything along the backside of the church property there. They have done a traffic study with traffic engineer to show the need for the crosswalk and stop sign, based on the pedestrian safety. And staff is recommending approval. I'd be pleased to answer any questions.
So, on the corner, the new buildings are for hospice and for.
Yeah, that's correct.
And for home healthcare. And for home health care and possibly some other offices.
Right.
And the idea is if they're going from there to the hospital.
Right, so the hospice-
You want a safe crosswalk instead of just going across the street.
Right. The hospice is at the corner here of Coley and Hill Country Drive. A new parking lot is located here between the hospice and the hospital to serve, the parking lot will serve the employees of the hospital. But obviously, there will be some interaction between the two.
And obviously, there'll be sidewalks. They're already cut.
Yes, they're already under construction at the hospice.
They go to the, uh.
Okay. Okay. Uh, it's a waiver of perimeter sidewalk construction. Any discussion?
I have a few questions, Mayor.
Uh-huh.
Uh, where does their property end to the northwest? Is it pretty much where they have the sidewalk stop?
Correct. Right at that dark blue line.
Okay. Um, the other question I had, can you go back to the street views?
Mm-hmm.
Is there, are we going to continue to allow street parking there? Is there going to be something? Because this parking lot is there, there won't be street parking right there?
That's the idea.
Okay, so there'll be no parking right at that intersection? Okay.
Correct.
So that's what that parking lot, this parking lot that we're looking at on this map, that's actually aimed at being employee parking? Is that?
It's my understanding.
Yes, that is correct.
Yes.
Employee of the, of the main hospital or of this, this new hospice stuff that's called?
Main hospital.
Okay. Um, you got more questions? If I just opened one for you.
No, that was just the street parking thing.
So, and so if that's the case, because part of what I was reading in the packet said was we wanted to put this crossing where it's going to be, this crosswalk.
Mm-hmm.
Um, in order to eliminate the possibility of mid-block, you know, jaywalking essentially crossings, right? But if, if I park in that parking lot, I'm not going to go backwards to that thing. I'm going into, when I first looked at this, I was wondering who's going to cross at that point, because all you're going to is the helicopter pad. And I was thinking that the, the proposal where the, where we're waving the sidewalk, if you crossed it at that, that's at a corner at the parking lot and across the hospital, if that makes sense. There's a red dot there, right there.
There's an existing stop sign exiting the parking lot there.
Right, so if, if we had put a crosswalk there, if I'm parking at this new parking lot and I'm going to the main hospital, I'm probably going that direction anyways.
Joe, could you speak to that?
Sure, so we actually will visit, so.
If you'll come to the, come to the mic.
And I'm hoping that any comments I'm making aren't going to reflect on my wife at work, right?
No, they won't, sir. Um, so actually, when you look, uh, and so this is obviously the street view, um, so there were two options. Uh, the first crosswalk, which is, uh, to the, I guess, north of that, and then the south, we're proposing the crosswalk. Uh, based on where you park in that parking lot, will depend on whether or not you're going much further back or further up. Yeah, but the idea also is for those folks that are traveling from the hospital over to the new hospice home care building, uh, will be able to utilize that same sidewalk as well, that crosswalk.
But we could, I mean, to that end, it wouldn't hurt you to have a second crosswalk, right? I mean, if there was a sec, if this one served its purpose, what you're talking about, they're going back. But if the other people that are going the other direction naturally, if they had a crosswalk there, that wouldn't hurt them, right?
The other thing that is included in this is a three-way stop.
Right.
And so the, that's the reason behind putting the crosswalk there is the addition of that three-way stop. Uh, without that, based on those curves and, and the speed of traffic, it really is not safe to, to cross there without that three-way stop.
Okay, and this is probably a question for you as opposed to Drew. What, what's the projected cost of the part we're trying to waiver? Do you know?
I do not.
Okay.
Yeah, and we did not want to encourage people, uh, crossing, basically jaywalking. And so not having that sidewalk over there will ideally prevent that.
Okay.
Yeah, for clarification, though, the new building will have a sidewalk all the way around.
That is correct. So what we're seeing at right here is basically just for that parcel of property where that parking lot would be.
It's cut out.
Okay. All right, okay. Thank you. Any other questions on that item? If not, do I hear a motion on A D F to approve that waiver of perimeter sidewalk construction?
I make a motion that we approve this waiver of the sidewalk.
Okay, all right. And Segerman moves. Uh, Hagner seconds. All right, let's vote on that.
Thank you.
I'd, I'd like to say one more thing before we leave that topic. We voted on it, and I'm not trying to change that. Um, but I'm going to say again, because we keep doing this. Um, this is probably the sixth or so waiver of a sidewalk ordinance that we've had in a row. And I, I would suggest that if we don't review the thing soon, that we just put on a future agenda and just put a moratorium on it until we figure out what we're trying to do with it. Because we're doing variances left and right on it.
Okay. Who on the staff would look at that?
Well, yeah, I'll just say again that we have repeatedly mentioned that it's going to be part of the code rewrite that y'all will launch beginning in October with your appointments to that review committee in August. So it's coming pretty quickly, and it's important that we look at it in a comprehensive way with, with all of our development codes.
Okay, all right. Okay. Um, okay, amendments to the ethics policy for elected and sworn officials? And Commissioner Segerman?
Yes. Um, Commissioner, Council Vocal and I were asked shortly after our, our election to review the ethics policy. And actually, after reviewing, at least from my point of view, I thought it was very thorough. Um, and then an occurrence happened June eleventh that actually caused me to rethink a necessary part to public awareness. Uh, I know you all have the paperwork. Do you have any questions on the amendment that I'm proposing, or would you like for me to read it?
I think you might read it.
Okay. Okay, so on June eleventh, um, a, a sort of a town hall meeting was called in the Doyle Center Community Center neighborhood. Um, it was a very short notice meeting, so therefore, we were not able to post a notice and all five of us attend, which I thought was, was, would have been important. So I have written some language to take care of that happening or not happening again in the future so that we can attend very important items that are on the future agendas. So it says, "If a matter or subject is currently pending action by the city council by having been publicly posted on an agenda or been previously acted upon or heard by the city council within the last thirty days, then no member of the city council may convene a public gathering on this same matter or subject without the public gathering being properly posted by the city secretary at least seventy-two hours in advance so that the public in general and other city council members are given notice and an opportunity to attend." Um, this requirement does not apply to informal gatherings like we might have coffee talks or, um, just meet the neighbors in the neighborhood. This would be more of a formal invitation to attend a town hall meeting on a particular subject. So I, I just would like to have this wording added to our ethics policy so that we have the, the benefit of attending these meetings. So, I'm open for any comments.
All right, and Peggy McKay, uh?
Are you going to have a discussion?
Yeah.
Peggy McKay, P O Box two-nine-one-four-six-four, Curville, seven-eight-zero-two-nine. Um, my concern with this is the part where this has already public been discussed at council. And, um, in the past, uh, recent past, when there's been, uh, changes to the ethics and procedural changes, the sponsors of those changes were already violating them before the ink was practically dry. So, um, the very rules they were demanding of others, they were violating. And I'm concerned that we keep going through this each time to, to, to do something that makes things specific. And my question, Mayor, is to the city, um, attorney, if I may. And my question is, once a subject's been discussed publicly, is it not then in the public domain? And I don't think that you could bar a council member from discussing it informally. So my question is, we're talking formal and informally, and Ms. Segerman mentioned coffee klatch, uh, type thing. But that barely touches an explanation to, to define the two.
Okay, I don't think-
Formal and informal.
Well, and let me just remind Council that I haven't advised you on this, and I'm, you know, I'm, I'm there, you can appreciate this. I'm their attorney. So I will attempt to answer maybe your question, but I'm only going to do so when I look at my client and, and get kind of a response. But they want me to go through that.
That, that's actually what I was going to say, because you, you're not really supposed to directly-
Right.
-ask him. So you can, you ask him and then we decide that's what we're going to do.
Yeah.
Yes, the mayor will ask the city attorney.
Well, there you go, so.
Okay, so the mayor can do that, but I just want to make sure I'm looking at the client and they're all saying, I mean, this is an ethics policy, and let me remind Council, this is a self-policing policy. So in other words, you know, if I were to get a call, I would say you need to broach that subject with your peers. Uh, you know, you all enforce this. Uh, there, there's no provision in here for me to go out and, you know, rap on someone's door and say you've, I, I believe you violated the policy. Um, so I wouldn't be involved in that at all. Um, now, that being said, in answer to your question, they, they can do whatever really they want to to kind of police themselves and to try to adopt rules and, or adopt rules that they think will govern their conduct in a way that will make them better, more efficient council members.
And I'll just add that I believe that some of the people at that meeting was their first time to have a conversation about the twenty-fifty plan. As much as it has been publicized and as many meetings as there have been, so if there were people there for the very first time talking and thinking about this plan that on the very night next evening would be voted in, I think it would behoove us to share all of our opinions and let them decide for themselves how they feel about the plan or what ca, what questions. Because I would have liked to have heard their concerns and, um, heard the conversations in general to get a feel for, um, how we can help.
Well, uh, when there isn't, uh, when something like this occurs, would not a council member bring that, the response of people back to council? Would that not make it seem more inclusive?
That's kind of after the fact, though, because the next evening, we, we heard those questions twenty-four hours later. We might could have answered them on that evening before the council meeting. At, at least it laid some of their concerns and fears so that the council meeting itself that took place twenty-four hours later would be, could be reserved for more details, more thorough details, and some answers. And they, they might have left with even more information than they did. Uh, and I think the disadvantage that some of us had is we did not hear firsthand that evening on Monday what, what are they concerned about? You know, how can we help them, uh, understand the wording or?
Well, I understand that, but this is fuzzy and hazy. And I see more, more problems coming from this rather than something that's more black and white and easier to deal with, to have a definition to follow. And, and to me, this is another hazy thing.
Well, it's, you know, but I think that it also, it, it, not being hazy, it, it defines that everyone should be included so that everyone's opinions can be there on, on either side. And you have more than one person hearing what's coming back from the people that you're meeting with. So I think that instead of making it hazy, I, I really think it, it helps to clarify it.
Let me say, uh, time is up and, uh, I, I, I want to give, uh, Commissioner.
Councilman.
Councilman.
Uh, I was just going to make comments that I, I don't think we need to put this in place. Um, I'm not sure why this has been an issue. I'd actually encourage y'all to go out and talk to people, try to inform them, have their input. I don't think we need a quorum in there, and, uh, I guess y'all are using this last example. If you're kind of, I see it as limiting the minority of, on a council. Because if we, if I want to go out and talk to people and three of y'all voted against me, I'm not sure I really want y'all there to have y'all to, to shadow me. So, and I'm, I'm going to continue to go out and try to talk to people and share my concerns and have their input.
Yeah, I think, I think all of us are.
I think that's what we all want to do. That's why we were specific about the, the, the subject matter. If it is an item that will be on the agenda, well, we actually had a time period we were going to use, thirty days. If you've, if we've been currently talking about something and we are divided on our senses on how we feel about it, I think it's still, the, the general public still needs to hear our point of view and your point of view. And then they can decide for themselves, um, how they feel about the subject. But without all of that information, they are only left to have your, your com, your comments and your input.
Okay, I think-
And I don't want to change meaning with people, but.
But it's also, it's not a have to be there, but it's a if someone else wanted to be a part of that.
Well, I would have wanted to have been a part of that, which is why, why we, I came up with this wording. And it's not like I really want to rehash history, but I thought it was important enough to bring up, so.
All right, we have a couple of speakers, Nikki Sarge, um, Sandra Garcia, Renee LaFaso.
Hi, I'm Nikki Sarge, and my concern with changing the ethics, um, is, for me, I feel that the city council is a, a voted body that we voted. You know, our votes are the ones that made this happen. And we voted for personalities and passion and people who believed in things that we believed in. If, if everyone has to be attending at every single event all the time, I don't know how y'all regularly work. I mean, you know, I mean, everything has to be so formal instead of organic. For a community, for me, um, the issue is it takes away from the, from the organic conversation that can happen through a community and makes it too formal and too rigid and too political.
That's not what I intended the wording to say, though.
So, that's all I had to say.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, uh, Sandra Garcia?
Good evening. Um, my concern, first of all, is freedom of speech. I think, um, as the lady before me said, we voted this group in. So we feel like they have a right to go and speak to their constituents. I feel if you wanted to hear from the community, why didn't you, um, go out and meet with them? Or talk to them? I'm not asking for an answer. It's a rhetorical question. Um, so I think if you didn't hear what they needed, that's on you for not going to find out. I command any council person who goes out to hear from their constituents. Secondly, I think this is a reactionary, um, action. And I think when we do that, we're not really thinking about long-term. You know, we're going to put this policy in now, in a couple of years or months, we're going to take it away because we want to do something different. So I think by limiting, um, and requiring you to be at everything limits what we get to see and know. I think when our councilman can go and speak to anyone, then we get to know what's going on. I may not have been here for a meeting, and if my councilman comes out to my area to notify me and let me know, hey, you weren't there, you don't know what's happening, you need to be informed, that is your job. And I don't think it's up to one person to invite all of you to a meeting. If you want to share something with the group, you set your meeting up. If he wants to have a meeting with a group, he can set his meeting up. I think it's ludicrous that you would want to limit. Thank you.
Uh, let me say, it, it, it does not prohibit me from meeting with constituents.
No, on an agenda item that's been put at a meeting, here it does.
It just means you can be invited. It doesn't prohibit him from speaking or to anyone.
It prohibits, I think the language was that it prohibits them from creating a meeting once something is on the-
Yeah, yeah, could you, if you're coming, mark.
My understanding of the language is that if it's been discussed- My understanding of the language is that if it's been discussed here, he cannot, or she cannot, set up a meeting with constituents after the fact, that it's been discussed and-
What I'm asking for is for him to please do that, and please let us decide.
Well, not just him. See, I think you're focusing on one councilman, because what if Ms. Eichner does it?
Exactly.
But you said him, so I think-
Any councilmember.
Any councilmember. And that's my point of it being a reaction against an individual.
Well, if I had a crystal ball.
Rather than it being for the benefit of all council. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Renee. Okay. Just a second.
Oh, Renee LaFaso, 24727 State Highway North. I see it completely different than the two women who just spoke before. I am, I view the council as my councilmembers and all of our councilmembers, who are looking out for all of us, supposed to. So I completely, no, I absolutely agree with your amendment. And it was interesting to hear you read your amendment. Yet, yes, I am going to call you out, George Burdi. But unfortunately, I look at you, and you're sitting there shaking your head. And it's just that, like you're doing right now. You can't even hide it. I mean, it's just that kind of thing, that like, I think what Ms. Seigerman is trying to do is to say, you know what, we should all be able to be invited to something. And absolutely, it's not the responsibility, I mean, anyone can go and talk, but when you have a community, when you have a, I mean, what was it? It was a community, a community-
Well, I call it a town hall meeting, but-
Right. Then, since every single one of you vote and have input, I mean, that is your input, and that is how you make the ordinances. That's how everything goes forward. And there's a lot of things that, you know, happen and don't, that I don't necessarily agree with. But hey, if all of you are voting a certain way, that is the general census of what's going on. So I absolutely, this can't hurt, it can't hurt at all, it can only help. And just like Mike Hayes was saying, anything that's going to police you all a little better, a little more, why in the world would citizens be, you know, afraid of that? I mean, it is political. I mean, that's what, you know, like, it has to be. There has to be standards, and there has to be, you know, just basic guidelines that, you know, I mean, I understand the organic part, but no, not really in this. Because this isn't organic, this is real. I mean, this really does affect us, this really, you know. And everyone's opinion absolutely should be heard, because in all theory, everyone's opinion up here is the theory of all of us, you know? And so, that can only, that could only be of benefit. So absolutely, by all means, bring it on, you know? I mean, yes, police yourselves some more, I greatly appreciate it, I tip your hat to it. You know, I really do. So, so no, I see it very differently, and I think it's something that citizens should be grateful when our councilmembers want to police themselves more. I mean, hello, that's the ultimate, you know, looking out for the whole of communities' backs. That's what this is about. Thank you.
Okay, Mario? And then Kimber.
Mario Garcia, 934 Pecan. You know, I'm, I guess I'm more constitutional in the sense. I've kind of been going that way, I've been doing my own research. I'm starting to realize I'm more that way. Anything we add more to that, I think it filters, you know, that process. And I think this amendment adding that kind of adds to that freedom of speech kind of a thing from that background. And as far as policing and stuff, I know we need to have that, to have a just society, but like I said, constitutional, I mean, that's the police right there. And I hate to say it, but I think the law we passed about the handheld, I'm still on that. It's just still, every time I put my hand on it, and I'm in the city, I'm like, if somebody sees, I'm going to take it. But I mean, do we really need that? And do we need to really add some, one more thing that's going to filter us or to have to hamper us? Or even more, not being able to get together in a meeting just because we want to speak? And because we add this on there, that's going to add that extra filter. So I'm more in the sense of freedom. I think the more freedoms we have, the better we are, I think, with each other. And then the more you add to that, the more we get to point out and say, you did this and you did that. And I don't think I need, not anybody pointing to me, but I don't need to be pointing at anybody else. So that's just my point, thank you.
All right, one more, and then we'll move to a vote.
And then we'll have discussion.
Kimber Falkenberg, 1100, Donna K. Drive. Thank you for letting me speak on this issue, I wasn't expecting to. But I actually have an experience, which was a little bit different. I am a big believer in freedom of speech, and that all of you should have the opportunity to speak your mind and say what you want. In my experience in 2015, I was the unfortunate accidental byproduct of a political agenda. I had a city councilman approach me and ask to have a meeting about a specific topic, and let me know that he was in favor of having this discussion and wanted to know more information, because I was considered an industry expert in a particular area of interest. I met with that individual, but what I didn't know was happening is his political agenda in the background. And subsequently, he invited other councilmembers to that meeting in order to push his political agenda, and also met with other community members that I was a part of, and painted a clear picture for them to see, which was actually untrue. As a result of his political agenda, I have spent years trying to fight against the attempts he made. And my freedom of speech has been reduced as a member of this community. So I would just like to say that I, I'm not really sure that I have had time to listen to exactly what you're proposing, Councilwoman Seigerman. But I think it's important to understand that it can be used against us if we are not well-informed on every subject matter as a citizen of this community, or we're not well-informed about the potential political agendas that are in play, that are bigger than us. So I think that's just a really important consideration, and I urge you to hear what everybody said, and, you know, use your best judgment on what we said. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, do we have discussion of this one?
Yeah, yeah, go ahead. So the first thing is that on its face, it seems like this is, seems more appropriately a procedural rule than an ethics code. But, so I'm not really sure that it should be in ethics. It's somewhat laying out a procedure of how you handle a, I guess, formal gathering of citizens with a councilperson. So my first suggestion would be that we move it out of ethics and into procedural rules, if that's what you want them to be doing. But the, the other things that are involved here, they talked about, others have talked about freedom of speech. You know, whether we have this rule as it's written, or we don't, every one of us is entitled to attend anything they wish to. The only stipulation is that if there's possibly going to be a quorum, that you have to get the meeting posted. So nobody was actually excluded from this. What this is actually doing is saying that we are, we as councilmen will no longer be able to hold meetings that we haven't actually presented as a block vote, if you will, that we're all going to be there at. And it takes away the actual freedom to discuss with the citizens. As one of them said, nothing stops any of us from interacting with the citizens. It's not on me to bring the citizens to you. It's on all of us to go to the citizens, which is all I really did, since this is actually about-
Well, could you have not have given, let us give notice then?
Let me go through this, and you can start blowing holes in it if you like. But basically, well, to answer that one, yeah, I could have, but this is making it a requirement. I'm suggesting to you that it was not actually necessary, nor was it even really detrimental to have done what I did. Now, you've obviously, or maybe not obviously, probably heard the actual words that were spoken there. If in fact falsehoods were told, then that's an ethics violation in and of itself. I don't have a problem with someone trying to do that. But barring false statements, we should all be entitled to speak wherever we like.
I don't disagree with that.
As far as, well, but here's the loophole to what you've actually presented. First off, we have a situation where this is suggesting that any councilman is not allowed to be a part of any interaction that has, okay, you've thrown out the word formal, or informal is something that's an undefined term, but let's just pretend that we knew what that was. We can't have a formal meeting where I go meet with Mark, say, and we go meet with someone at the county, because without making that a public meeting, okay? That hinders negotiations of different things, because you're, the situation, the words that you've written are that it has to be posted to the public. So we can't have non-posted gatherings that are formal, okay? So that would be one problem to this.
Well, you can, you just have to plan it.
No, you have to post it, according to the words you put.
That's part of the planning process.
Okay, but that makes something that shouldn't be, yeah, but that makes something open to the public that many times administration of a government, you don't want a public meeting at. You don't want the public there, you're trying to do something smaller than that. This doesn't actually allow for it, so that's one problem. The other is, as one of them pointed out, it's reactionary, and it's really just targeting because people got their feelings hurt, that they weren't invited to something, and they were afraid that I wasn't able to, they weren't able to respond to it. But what was it, two weeks later, that, so this deal is, you put it on the person announcing the meeting, that they have to get the meeting posted. It becomes their responsibility, okay? The Open Meetings Act doesn't actually see it that way, right? So this is kind of flipping it around a little bit. But if we require them to post, to get the meeting posted, and we don't handle the problem that we ran into, what, a week or two ago? Where I was attempting to be an attendee at a meeting, and I asked to get it posted, and I was refused the ability to post that meeting. So if we apply your ethics rule?
Why were you refused?
I don't know.
This, as soon after I became mayor, I asked to do a neighborhood meeting at the Doyle School Community Center, because I know that community, I know the people, everything else. And I was going to just talk some about being mayor, and then talk about some things that, you know, about where the city was going and that kind of thing. And so, as it turns out, you know, it was not going to be posted because it was an informal gathering with neighbors. But it was insisted that there was going to be at least one additional councilmember and maybe more, therefore, it had to be posted. But as it turned out, it got to be such a hassle that I just canceled the meeting. But technically, that meeting could be held just with me and constituents.
Right.
And now somebody, you could have two councilmembers that say, well, we're coming, so then it's got to be posted.
And let me just remind everyone why I thought about this. I'm not trying to just, the people that came to the Tuesday night council meeting were visibly and emotionally upset. And I wished I could have been part of the process of clarifying some things prior to the council meeting. In other words, I think it was a shame that, why they were upset, I don't know. I mean, I can imagine if they figured, think they might be displaced from their homes, that would be very upsetting. And I don't know exactly what the words were, but I heard that's what was said, and that's not what the plan says. And I felt defensive on Tuesday evening because I hadn't had a chance to visit with these people. And as a matter of fact, would have wanted to, still want to. I still think we can, this is not about prohibiting a meeting. The town hall meeting that occurred on June 11th was not in a home. It was not in a coffee shop, it was not in a neighborhood park. It was a prepared, organized meeting to share some concerns that Councilmember Burdi had with them. And I would have liked the opportunity to be there at least, to listen and hear how they responded.
Let me say this, there's obviously a good bit of confusion and debate on this item. We've got a lot to do tonight, and we've got people that are here that want to participate. I am going to suggest, and Mr. Hayes, I'm going to suggest that we hold this till another time.
I think it needs some clarifying anyway, obviously.
I would respectfully ask that, is everything that's been aired here tonight, that I get the chance to air what I was going to air? To leave it hanging out there like that is just adding to the further perception of what's going on here, which is just to silence me. So rather than do that, why don't we just take the few minutes and finish the discussion, and then you can push it off?
I would say, let me ask you this.
How long will it take?
It won't take long to explain what you just asked about.
The, in terms of tabling this to another time, holding it to another time, what do we, how do we need to proceed?
Well, it sounds like you don't necessarily agree as a body, so I would suggest you have a vote, whether to table it or not.
You make a motion to table.
Okay, I'll make the motion that we table it, and come back to it another time.
I'll second.
Okay, motion second.
I'll second it.
I did.
Did you hit the motion?
There we are, okay.
And we are voting to table.
Yeah, we're voting to table. Okay.
You do now, sorry.
Okay. Okay, so 4-1 to table it. Okay, let me ask you, is it getting cold in here? If somebody could address that issue, please. Thank you. All right, the, okay. 8H is amendments to the procedural rules for meetings for, of the Kerrville City Council. So, Councilman Seigerman.
Okay, yes, this happened at the planning and zoning meeting, not sure when. But there'd been some confusion, we were all in attendance, all the councilmembers and mayor were in attendance, and I was under the impression we weren't allowed to speak. And this had to do with the approval of the 2050 plan. We did all speak, so I went back and read, and it looked like we were not supposed to speak. But I wanted to add, unless we were invited to do so by the chairperson of the board and commission holding the meeting.
You said we did all speak? I didn't speak.
Well, excuse me, no, you didn't.
I was told not to speak, my staff, but I wanted to speak, but I was said, referred to our procedural rules.
Yeah, you're, you're right.
Yeah.
And I did speak, not understanding that it was in violation of the rules.
And I did speak also not understanding.
So what we're talking about is, we won't speak in those board meetings and so forth unless invited by the chairperson.
I'm not sure we really need to speak at all, unless it's personal business.
Well, go ahead and let, go ahead and let her finish the explanation.
Yeah, okay, any other words?
There's no other explanation, it's just that if you have something to add and some input that would be valuable, I think that to be invited, and you would, you might, perhaps the chairperson would say, you will just stick to this subject, we'd like your input on, it could be their experience, it could be some added value. But, you know, they'd have to be, you know, invited to do so. We did speak, so I wanted to address it and clarify it one way or the other, are we to or not? So that's the gist of the-
Most of the time, it comes to counsel after- Most of the time it comes to council after P and Z, so I'm not sure there's a reason we need to speak at P and Z. But I think it will, it does have the potential of influencing them. We do appoint them.
And that's what they're saying, unless we were asked for some specific reason by the chairperson.
Does that mean we all have to speak?
No.
No, no, no.
We're all invited?
Could just be one of us.
If, if you're at P and Z and you're invited.
If one of us is invited to speak, are they going to have to invite the rest of us from the agenda item before?
There would only be, there would only be two there. So I, yeah, I assume you'd, you'd ask both.
I don't see a reason to change it.
So, so I got a request and to speak, is it my turn?
Yeah.
Okay. So this is, this is kind of convenient that it's coming right after the last one because the last one that we were talking about was retroactively trying to punish the councilman. And this one's retroactively trying to get us off the hook. And so, so anyways, this one, we had two, a- as you described, we had, it was the mayor and Ms. Eichner come up to speak at the P and Z meeting. And on our way up, Ms. Seigerman said, well, I didn't think we were allowed to speak, but you guys did, so I'll speak. So basically, we had three of us going up and breaking the procedural rule, right? So on top of it, the procedural rule itself, as it's, as it's worded now, has the, the caveat that one of the reasons we're trying to not do it is because if it's an item that's going to come up to council for a vote, we're possibly tramping over due process. And correcting if I'm wrong, Mr. Hayes, but that was one of the reasonings why we didn't want them speaking.
In the first place.
In the first place, right. So I would argue that whether the chairman invites you up or not, doesn't, doesn't get us past the due process problem. The other thing that occurred on that particular night wasn't just a procedural rule being broke, but we actually broke, I believe, okay, so allegedly broke, an Open Meetings Act code because when the mayor came up to speak, so we had, we posted this as a possible quorum of council being present. And a quorum was present, I think four of us, you weren't, were you there? Okay, so all five of us were there. And when the mayor came up to speak, he gave a, you know, endorsement, if you will, of the comprehensive plan and said, that's why I'm going to vote for it. Well, at that point, council is now deliberating on an item that we didn't post for deliberation. And so the danger we have by allowing us to speak is we walk into problems like that. And I think we're okay, nobody's looking to give anybody a hard time about that particular event. I don't see a reason, I think we're safer if we just leave it the way it is. Where you're allowed to speak if it's an item that's directly related to something, your property, whatever. Other than that, just sit and wait on it to come to council and speak. I mean, you can still attend, we still have to post those, but it, it gets us clear of the due process problem, which doesn't look good. So that's kind of my take.
All right, what are we going to do with this one?
Well, I'm fine with keeping what George said, actually. I brought it up so we would know in the future what we want to do. So, you know, I, I think it's important that we give input, but we can give it at council meetings. So I just, I, I was in charge of looking at the ethics and policies and procedures and that's what I did. And that's why I presented the information. So we can vote accordingly, I suppose.
Okay.
Well, and the, the one, one last thing before we do that, just since we've got them up in front of us, you might want to go back and review your procedural rules because one of the items is in there. Says the presiding officer, officer will preserve order and decorum preventing the impugning of any member's motives or other personal comment not relevant to the orderly conduct of business. Just pay close attention to that as some people come up to speak as well as our own selves when we're, if you, you can go after somebody's words, but try and steer clear of the motives behind what they're doing because that's a procedural rule violation.
Mr. Mayor, I was just going to suggest, why don't we table this one also? And just take another look at all of these and bring it back at a future time.
I, I would say, I mean, that, that's okay, but it would be, let's just eliminate this as, if, if we're all in agreement that this particular amendment is not what we want, why don't we just vote on that and we can review the procedural rules down the road?
I, I think, I think that's right. Let's, I, I'm for voting this down and if it were, you know, it needs another look, then we can do that. I do want to thank Councilman Seigerman, who really has worked on this and looked at it very carefully and also attended a seminar on the legal issues and so, thank you. But, all right. Yes, yeah, okay. We're, we're going to move to vote, Sandra Garcia Marcia, do you, Mario, do you want to speak?
You want to table this?
No.
Well, no, we're not tabling it.
I'm going to hold on this one.
You're voting on it?
Yeah.
I was just going to say, probably regarding what you just said, that was interesting how the first one was to punish something and the second one is to get you off the hook. If they're, the rule's already there, rather than the first one we were talking about adding a rule, the rule's already there, we just play by the game and, you know, and that's, the game's already been set. And so probably is obviously some of y'all weren't aware of it, so with all of y'all being at one meeting. And that's, I mean, I guess that happens, you know? But now we're, we're quite clear now. As far as the first one we were talking about, I was thinking about that a lot and it's like me telling you, my kids play baseball, so it's like you weren't happy that I stole second? So now you want me to notify you if my kid was going to steal second so you can get your catcher, pitcher and shortstop ready? So anyways, anyway.
All right, okay, okay. That's right, all right. Okay, we're going to, we're going to, Sandra, we're going to move ahead to vote, okay? All right.
I made a motion, I think it's still on me. Yeah, I'm making a motion to deny or whatever, dis, not approve the amendment post, presented.
Okay, the motion is to not approve this amendment.
Right.
Which would.
Correct.
So if you don't want to approve the amendment, you vote yes.
Right, somebody's got to second it.
I second it.
All right, we got a motion second.
Motion was to not approve.
Correct.
Okay, I'm not sure that wording was in there.
Okay.
We're just waiting for the.
Okay.
See, I don't, that doesn't sound right.
All right, it's five, five oh. Okay, we come to Resolution Number 29, 2018 and confirming and reconstituting the mayor's youth advisory council as the Curville Youth Advisory Council or Committee to include providing its purposes, purpose, membership roles and responsibilities. And Stuart Cunias comes as the staff liaison.
Thank you, thank you, council, thank you, mayor. And of course, you just read the resolution, I just want to give you a very brief history. The mayor's youth advisory council was established in the spring of 2016 by motion under Mayor Jack Pratt as an advisory council for local high school students. For the past two years, it has been operating as MIAC under Mayor Bonnie White, she did a great job. This resolution and bylaws will more officially cement the group's status as an advisory commission with a new and more inclusive name than the staff recommends the passage of.
All right, okay, thank you very much. We have one speaker, Roman Garcia.
Good evening, mayor and council, my name is Roman Garcia. I'm the chair of the mayor's youth advisory council on here on Before That Council. And my address is 934 Pecan Street. So I want to start by commending the mayor and city council members who have previously kept this council going. And especially former mayor Bonnie White and the other council members who I've met and worked with. They've been very inclusive in keeping our perspective in this city. And there's a significant generation gap that I like to talk about between adults and the youth. And our youth council really narrows that generation gap by giving us a stronger and a louder voice. And direct contact with the leadership, our representatives helps us do that. I personally benefited by serving on this council for two terms and I've never thought, the past five years, that I would even met the mayor and the council members, even been able to talk to them, let alone. Also, this video is being broadcast and posted online on YouTube. And I just want the public to know that anyone who watches this, Curville is doing whatever it can to narrow that generation gap. These proposals that you have in front of you are amendments to the resolution that the mayor's youth advisory council has proposed. The reason that also there are no other members here present are because we have a well-traveled group. And there are some in India, Boston, Utah, all around the United States and overseas. So I'm, they sent their best regards and the best wishes that hopefully this gets passed.
But they left you behind?
Yeah, no, they sent their best representative good. So I am proud to be here on behalf of MIAC in support of this proposal. You can see that you're, the list I have before you, I've gone almost over it all with you, over the phone or in some other way. I'm not going to go through it all, but I would like to go ahead and point out that the reason we're changing, we would like to change our name from mayor's youth advisory council to Curville's youth, we actually wanted Action Council is because we felt, first of all, that this is the youth's council of the city of Curville. So we wanted to emphasize that and that we represent all the youth in the city. And the reason we chose Action was because we felt that we did more action by participating in community events and activities than more advisory to the city leadership. However, we also figured that since advisory is an action, that this is still fitting. We'd still be able to advise and that's still in our purpose, so we won't be changing any of that. Another point I'd like to hit on is changing our meetings to two a month instead of one, only one. This is because mainly for the first school semester from September to December, we went with one meeting. But after that, we all agreed that we needed more time and this gave us more time to consider and participate in other events within the city. Because other than that, we only had one meeting to plan for a whole month's worth until we had our next meeting. And that really cut us short. And so also having that two meetings per month, we had twice the amount, I like to emphasize, we had twice the amount of speakers and we participated in twice the amount of events than we did in the very first year within that short period of time when we doubled our meetings. So clearly, this is very, very beneficial for the council, there is no harm done. And lastly, with the few times I had left, I'd just like counsel to give me a little bit more time to finish this up. The mayor said earlier that we're creating a great city, piece by piece, through things like resolutions and budgets. And I agree, I love our city. I hope that these proposed amendments, that MIAC recommends as a part of this resolution, this piece to help form our great city gets approved by you council. Thank you very much for your time and you have that list, so if you have any questions or comments, I'd be able to try to answer this as best as possible.
I have some questions, but I've been talking a lot, so.
Oh, go ahead.
Well, the term here is described in this paper that I have for your, your committee, your council, says one year, one school year. So you're, you're proposing to change that or?
I'm sorry?
The term of office?
No, ma'am.
This is what it says here, one school year. So I was just curious about term limits or if you, if you have that or?
Oh, are you talking about in the resolution packet itself?
Well, it's what the city gave us as far as the description of the council.
Is it this, is it this one right here?
It's this one right here.
I don't have a copy of that one. Though the list that I presented to you is the list of recommendations that MIAC is presenting.
I have that too. You know, I had heard that there were, there were not, there was not good attendance when you had it twice a month.
Okay.
So, and I would have concerns, having had my own children and how busy they are at school, with maybe overloading them and then maybe your attendance would, would drop. You know, whereas if you had one meeting a month, you might get full attendance and versus the absenteeisms you might get with two.
Okay, so I'd like to respond to that. Our attendance actually didn't drop by much. I will admit, but I'll explain why, just so this isn't taking my words and using them in a different way. We did have one meeting where we didn't have a quorum, but the only thing we were doing that day was taking a tour of the Curvilly Municipal Airport. And when we got to that place, we did have a quorum. The only reason we did is because the two ladies that were going to form our quorum wanted to meet us there because it was closer to their school, they go to O L H. So that was the only special meeting that we called where we didn't have a quorum and unable to conduct business.
You have 15 members and you have always at least 11 or 12, is that what you're saying?
I would say around 10 or 11 is always be able to present, yes, ma'am. Well, because we had 15, at the very beginning of the first term, one member dropped out, so that gave us 14 members. City council never had the alternate come in, so we kept 14 members for the entire time until April when we had an applicant apply and then she got appointed in April. But besides that, we had 14 members all still there, so we only had about three members at the most usually that were average, that were absent during our meetings.
The only other question I have is, could you just brag a little bit about a project or two that you've done?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am. So one of them we did was the UGRA river cleanup. And that was actually before we had our initial first meeting in September. That was in July, but we had all of our members already appointed. So that was a very big one, it was over there. We went to, I cannot exactly remember what street it was on. But the mayor went with us too, we had maybe six, seven members that went over there and we did cleaning. I have a picture, I presented that to city council at one of my reports. But that was one of the big ones and our very starting ones. And they actually got to see, you know, wow, we can as a youth make a difference just by simply participating in community events. So that was one. Another one was also when we went to the Veterans Medical Cent, VA Medical Center. And it was for Valentine's Day and we handed out Valentine's Day cards and heart-shaped balloons. And you could just see the smile on their faces. That really shows us that, you know, we can make a difference. They, what, they want to see youth, you know, they're surrounded by everybody there. Seeing somebody their age come in, that, it just made a difference. So those were, I would say, our two probably biggest projects or events that we participated in.
We sidestepped that little, everyone that's there instead of saying old people.
I wasn't, I wasn't going to say old people, no. I wasn't going to use that term.
Roman, let me ask you on the.
Yes, sir.
On the special meetings, as it's outlined now, kayak may hold a special meeting or meetings for any purpose as called by the staff liaison based upon input and kayak members.
Yes, sir.
What you, what you're saying is that it would be called by the chair, which this year is you and, and y'all will elect new officers?
In September, correct.
In September, okay. So, or by the staff liaison upon the written request of six council members to the staff liaison and the chair. And the purpose of the meeting should be stated in, in the call and the agenda should be sent. That sounded like you really don't trust somebody.
It's not that, I believe that everywhere there's checks and balances and anything and this is just sort of one of those kinds of things that our council really took into consideration. And we wanted, I'll go ahead and start with the first point. So currently, it's the staff liaison calling the special meeting. We didn't completely take that out, as you saw, the staff liaison can call the meeting upon the written request of the six council members, I'll get into that in a bit. But we did feel that the chair should be able to call the special meetings as a member of the council and that's usually what you can see at other boards, the chair will call the special meeting. So that's nothing too different. Also, so we kept the staff liaison and the reason we wanted to do a written request was because last year, the first time we had it, the chair was out of town sometimes and so that member was unable to create an agenda. And at that time, we probably weren't going to have a meeting. Luckily, the staff liaison at the time created the agenda for us to have the meeting, the chair was not present. So in this case, it's not exactly saying where the chair doesn't want to call a meeting, it's that the chair can't. You know, that can always be the case either way. I'll also point on the six council members. I know I probably pointed this out to a couple of you when I talked to you about this. The written request of six council members, you're probably wondering why that is, why I just picked that, why we picked that number. And we picked it for a certain reason, two reasons mainly. One, our quorum currently is eight. So having six members have that written request shows that there's pretty much enough support to probably even have a quorum. support to probably even have a quorum there at our meeting. Two, if those six council members discuss having a meeting altogether, it's not in violation of the Open Meetings Act because there's not a quorum. So, it's, in a sense, you can also call it protecting the rights of the minority in this case, and just allowing those, just, you know, a little procedural thing that you can see at most boards as well.
Okay, you know, you and I have talked about this. One thing I would say, and I would not be for changing it to the Curville Youth Action Council. I think Curville Youth Advisory Committee is better because council really implies a level of authority, and this is really like an advisory board.
Okay.
So, and on the regular meetings and how frequently you have them, Mr. Cunious and I have talked about that. What, what do you have info on last year's attendance?
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate that. Let me say upfront that I applaud Roman's enthusiasm and his leadership of the group last year. He did a great job.
Yeah.
And I, I felt last year, having gone through it, and it's my first year to go through, go through it too, but as Roman said, we had fourteen pretty much who were members. And September, October, and November, and December, when we were meeting once a month, we did pretty well. We had thirteen members in September, twelve, eleven, and eleven, the last one being in December. Now, January eleventh, we had thirteen members. But after that, we started going to the, twice a month. Now, the next meeting, January twenty-fifth, we had ten. But then we dropped to seven, which was the lack of quorum that he mentioned. Then we had nine, and then we had eight. So, we had quite a few less there. And one of those, we barely missed not being able to meet because of a quorum. My concern with this, obviously, there's a lot going on in the school year. I think that once a month is a good schedule for them. We also have a rule that we didn't enforce last year, that if you miss three consecutive meetings, you're, you're asked to vacate the council. And we didn't enforce that, as I said, last year. If we had of during that period, we would have lost three of our group, including our secretary. And during the first five meetings that we had, we had no problems with getting the minutes. But we missed, in the last eight meetings, when we went to the twice a month, we missed five of those. So, I, I kind of feel like it was a little bit overwhelming for some of them, and that's why we recommend that we go back to once a month.
Okay, okay. Well, let me throw into that mix something, as you pointed out, so the first part of the year was the part that everybody was in attendance. So, rather than saying they were overwhelmed by two meetings a month, it could possibly be, no data to support either way, right? I'm not arguing the point, just throwing it out there, that as you get toward the end of the school year, students burn out. So, it's not a matter of not having two meetings or having, you know, two meetings. It's a matter of, at the end of a school year, this type of advisory council is probably going to run into those numbers, whether you got one or two. So, if they, as a body, have voted to do some of these, if it doesn't hurt us, I would say let them run with it. And if it turns out after the fall semester that, you know, only three people show up all the time, then, you know, we revisit it. But I, I wouldn't want to cheat them of the enthusiasm that they're showing right now.
Okay, I would say, again, we've got lateness of the evening, but the, here, here's a proposal, that we vote on the Curville Youth Advisory Committee bylaws. And then, we vote yes or no on the proposed amendments.
Before we get to that, I just have a couple of questions for Roman. I do like all the recommendations that you do have. As far as the fifteen members and three alternates, would it be twelve regular members and three alternates, kind of like we do with planning and zoning? We have twelve voting members, and as soon as one of them is absent, the alternate fills in?
That's, we did consider that. We did consider that. However, we felt that having what we were going to be presenting was going to be a lot, in a sense. So, we wanted to go ahead and just see how the fifteen members went. There was that, but we didn't vote on it simply because of that reason. We did want to have twelve regular members, that way it would also lower our quorum, and we wouldn't have any issues if we did. Again, we didn't, so that wasn't an issue. But in case we did, that was one, going to be one of the reasons. That can be something that if council, city council decides to put in, the youth council had already taken consideration of that and did have unanimous consent on that. However, you know, we just didn't, we didn't have that and want to present that to you today.
Okay. Let me ask this, did the bylaws exist, or is this the first time we're creating bylaws?
Correct, yes, sir.
Okay, so, rather than, I would say that rather than doing what you're suggesting, since we don't have bylaws anyways, we either accept these amendments in or don't accept them. But I don't know why we would do it in a two-step phase if we don't even have bylaws to start with, right?
I think we're accepting these bylaws. And we're accepting these bylaws, and then we make a decision about all the amendments. So, isn't that the staff recommendation?
I think the staff recommendation is, I think the staff recommendation is to approve the resolution which has the bylaws.
Yeah, okay.
I, I would go ahead and make a motion that we approve the bylaws with the amendments two, three, four, and five, and leave the name Curville Youth Advisory Committee. So, I, I'd be making a motion to approve the bylaws as written with these two, three, four, five amendments added in.
I'll second.
Rudy, before, if you'll do that, just substitute the resolution. The resolution will do exactly what you said to do. We've got the resolution, it sets out the adoption of the bylaws.
Turn off my mic. And it does exactly what you're trying to do, plus, you know, you have the amendments.
All it, is that not what I just did?
You did mention the resolution.
Okay, so, okay, so, I'm making a motion that we approve the resolution twenty-nine dash twenty-eighteen?
Yes.
With the added amendments that we've been presented to, numbers two, three, four, and five.
I'll second.
All right, and it passes four to one.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, appreciate your support.
Thank you, Roman.
Chief Smith?
Okay, Mayor, Council, on November eighth, two thousand and sixteen, Resolution Number Twenty-six, two thousand and sixteen, created the Recovery Community Coalition. One of the requirements listed in Empowers and Duties is that the coalition will make an annual report to the council. Dale Trees, Chairperson of the Coalition, is here to make that annual report to the council tonight.
I'm sorry, I meant to let everybody know also, that's Garcia for Governor in two thousand and thirty-four. Anyways, sorry.
And before we get started, I would like to go ahead and recruit you to be on my board. Until that time happens that you become governor, or whatever that is you're going to go for. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. My name is Dale Trees. I'm Chairman of the Curville Recovery Community Coalition here in Curville. And thank you for giving us the time to give you an update on the coalition, which was started, was came into existence in January of two thousand and seventeen. So, we're a little late on our annual update. I'm going to start off a little bit with who is on our coalition currently. You'll see our names listed here. This is myself first, Dale Trees, I am the Chairperson. I'm also an alumni support representative of a local treatment facility, a peer recovery support specialist by the state of Texas. I also work with the Kirk County Probation Office and the Phoenix Program, and that works with persons who are in the Safe P, that is Substance Use Felony Program. And I'm manager of that particular program, and I'm also a certified recovery residence management-trained. I do not participate in that, but I am certified. Other members of our coalition currently is Dawn Elder, who's our Vice Chair of the Coalition. She's Business Development Manager and Corporate Education for a local treatment facility. Dr. Kendall Young, is our secretary, she is Lead Counsel of the High School Curville Independent School District. Chief Danny Smith is our City Executive Liaison, and is also the Fire Chief of the City of Curville Fire Department. Jay Stephen Paltler, he is the Chief Operating Officer, Peterson Health. Carol McCarrick, who is also here with us this evening, this is my group over here, by the way, they've all joined us. Carol McCarrick is a member, and she's an LCDC Licensed Counsel, Licensed Chemical Dependency Counselor and Case Manager of a local treatment facility. Rick Stolpmann, who is unable to attend tonight, is part of the Celebrate Recovery, and he's a retired contractor and a citizen of the community of Curville. Laura Goodwin, excuse me, Laura Godwin, she is a member of our coalition and an owner of a, the North Star Female Recovery Residence here in Curville, in the city limits. Cecil Light is also a member, and he is a retail business owner and an owner of the male recovery residences. Claudia Rickner, she is an RN and holds a Bachelor in Psychology, and she is a professional counselor, retired, and she's an interested member of our community. Blair Geisler is a member of our board as well. He is in Retail Business Management and a member of the recovery community as a citizen. Sean Driggers is a member as well, local business owner in the city of Curville and interested community citizen in our efforts. We also have on board with us recently is LeAnn Fitzpatrick, who's a member of our board and Superintendent of the Curville State Hospital. We have currently two positions open, and that was due to the change of city councils no longer residing on or holding position on multiple boards. And I believe the next item up after me is for appointment by city council to fill one of those positions, which was vacated recently by Mr. Ross Robinson, who received accommodation earlier. So, we'll leave that up. Now, I gave all of our members currently who are on the coalition to fulfill what was put in place according to qualifications, as outlined in the original formation guidelines of this coalition. Those guidelines and the qualifications were and still are, at least one member from each of the following, but any of which may include more than one member. Owner of a male boarding home facility with valid permit issued by the city. Owner of a female boarding home facility with a valid permit issued by the city. Member of the recovery community. Citizen of Curville with interest in these issues. Representative of mental health support organizations such as Curville State Hospital. Representative of Peterson Health. Representative of Hill Country OMHDD Centers. Representative from a residential addiction treatment facility located in, within Kirk County. And two council members. Again, those two positions remain open, and all of our members on our board are appointed through application by the city council. Our original purpose is outlined, the formation of the coalition. And the purpose statement of the Curville Recovery Community Coalition was created by two of our previous council members, Mr. Andrew and Mr. Fine, who served on the coalition during the first part of two thousand and seventeen. KRCC, also, is the Curville Recovery Community Coalition, has maintained and continues to follow this as it is outlined for our prior, to our, outlined prior to our first meeting, which was held in January of two thousand and seventeen. Our purpose statement is, "The purpose of the coalition is to enhance the opportunities for the recovery community to become fully integrated into the fabric of Curville. The coalition shall work toward considering and identifying strategies and techniques for reducing barriers for the recovery community to be fully integrated into a local, into the local community, as well as to identify and advocate goals and ideas for enhancing positive relationships by and amongst the recovery community." The Curville Recovery Community Coalition spent its initial period becoming familiar with the city rules and regulations, municipal-sponsored coalitions, learning from city staff the requirements for proper documentation creation and filing guidelines. In the first two months, we were reviewing city ordinance involving group homes. That was the first assigned task. I'll come back to that in just a moment. During our time together with the assistance of a couple of other persons, came on board to help facilitate, and we formed three subcommittees. And in recent months, we have been productive with the Curville Recovery Community Coalition, working to develop three specific subcommittees identifying as critical, excuse me, identified as critical to the success of our mission, transportation, resource information, and public relations and media. These work groups have begun critical work in the community to include, but not limited to, hosting trainings and educational events with city services in Curville. There is more information on this coming up as well. So, in turning back to our original task or the purpose, we broke this down into four items of task. Enhancing positive relationships by and amongst the recovery community. Consider and identify strategies for reducing barriers to recovery in Curville. Review the ordinance and increase opportunities for integration. The first of which, enhancing positive relationships by and amongst the Recovery Community Coalition. The KRCC invites community service providers to educate the coalition and their affected communities of service available. During the past several months, the KRCC has completed two education and awareness events in partnership with Curville Police Department. KRCC has developed a media and public relations work group dedicated to developing a message of hope in the recovery and introducing a new narrative to the larger Curville community about its citizens. And in considering and identifying strategies for reducing barriers to recovery in Curville. Utilizing the existing Curville Services Directory, the KRCC is reviewing to identify gaps specific to those who are new in and seeking help with substance use and mental health disorders within Curville. The KRCC has identified in-service trainings for city-provided services such as fire, EOMS, and first responders, who can help reduce barriers for those in crisis or in The KRCC in the review of the Ordinance Number two zero one three dash zero six, Chapter Thirty, Article One, Code of Ordinances, consensus, after a couple of months of discussion, was to end the review of said ordinance. The KRCC would require additional legal resources and access to more in-depth reviews of housing laws. The existing coalition is comprised of a diverse knowledge and persons of abilities. However, we do not have the legal background to make required changes at this time to this ordinance. It was decided to end the ordinance discussion and to refocus the KRCC on remaining tasks where a great deal of impact can be made on the Curville community as a whole. And increasing opportunities for integration, the KRCC began reviewing Curville employers, currently considered recovery-friendly, workforce opportunities for those seeking help with substance use disorder and mental health issues, is a proven and effective recovery support which helps to create long-term sustained recovery and improvement. It also positively impacts the city of Curville economically. The KRCC is developing a strategy to connect employers who want to support those seeking help with those who are seeking stable employment opportunities within our community. The coalition members for the KRCC represent individuals affected by substance use and mental health disorders, professionals serving those seeking help, first responders, EOMS, Curville Police Department, social services, business owners, housing professionals, and more. The KRCC sees this coalition's integration of such a diverse group of individuals seeking to improve the health and wellness of the, of Curville as a first look at what integration can do for our community. the health and wellness of Kerrville as a first look at what integration can do for our community. We are working to further develop the impact opportunities for the KRCC and its members of Kerrville. The impact of Kerrville Recovery Community Coalition since formation by city council. We have increased access to services, education, awareness, collaborative model of development, bringing together fire, EMS, police, and related nonprofits, business owners, citizens of Kerrville, and improve overall health and wellness of Kerrville. And as a coalition, the members are expectant and confident in forward movement to increase the overall recovery, health, and wellness within Kerrville by improving access to services, reducing barriers, and better integrating our city for and with those seeking help from substance use and mental health disorders. We are working to develop impact strategies through the following measures. By engaging, develop, deploy, and long-term strategic plan for recovery wellness in Kerrville. Counsel, I would like to ask you to turn to the handouts I believe that were passed to you pre-meeting. I've added a couple of inserts of helpful information I'd like to refer to, which are not part of the PowerPoint. There are only a few items that I'm going to pull from and if you'll see what I have added to is at the very back of the packet that's clipped and there's another that's just slid in that's stapled, I believe. I'm going to speak of what is attached to the original folder, the very back. I pulled some helpful information from Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration known as SAMSSN, it's a federal organization. In some of our work, we had to find a common definition and instead of trying to come up and reinvent a will, we're, we are reaching out, utilizing resources that are already available to us. And a working definition of recovery for mental disorders and/or substance use disorders. It's a process of change through which individuals improve their health and wellness, live a self-directed life, and strive to reach their full potential. I believe it's, I'm reading from, did y'all find this?
No.
Okay.
I didn't.
It's page three of.
Oh, something, okay, yes.
This definition at the top?
Okay, got you, I'm there. Sorry.
It also speaks of health, home, purpose, and community. And under health, overcoming or managing one's disease or symptoms, for example, abstaining from the use of alcohol, illicit drugs, and non-prescribed medications is one, if one has an addiction problem. And for everyone in recovery, making informed, healthy choices that support physical and emotional well-being. As far as home, a stable home and safe place to live is vital. A purpose, a meaningful daily activities such as a job, school, volunteer, volunteerism, family caretaking, or creative endeavors, and the independence, independence, income, and resources to participate, to participate in society. And the community, relationships and social networks that provide support, friendship, love, and hope. And recovery emerges from hope and the belief that recovery is real provides the essential and motivating message for a better future, that people can and do overcome the internal and external challenges, barriers, and obstacles that confront them. Hope is internalized and can be fostered by peers, families, providers, allies, and others. Hope is the catalyst of the recovery process. And recovery is holistic. Recovery encompasses an individual's life, whole life, including mind, body, spirit, and community. This includes addressing self-care practices, family, housing, employment, transportation, education, clinical treatment for mental disorders and substance use disorders, services and supports, primary healthcare, dental care, complimentary, and alternative services, faith, spirituality, creativity, social networks, and community participation. The array of services and supports available should be integrated and coordinated. An important factor of recovery process is the presence and involvement of the people who believe in a person's ability to recover, who offer hope, support, and encouragement, and who also suggest strategies and resources for change. Family members, peers, providers, faith groups, community members, and other allies form vital support networks. Through these relationships, people leave unhealthy and/or unfulfilling life roles behind and engage in new roles, such as partner, caregiver, friend, student, and employee, that lead to a greater sense of belonging, personhood, empowerment, autonomy, social inclusion, and community participation. And a community system and societal acceptance and appreciation for people affected by mental health and substance use problems, including protecting their rights and eliminating discrimination, are crucial in achieving recovery. There is a need to acknowledge and take steps towards recovery may require great courage. Self-acceptance, developing a positive and meaningful sense of identity, and a regaining belief in one's self are particularly important in recovery. My other slides didn't make it. As recent as last week, the Recovery Community Coalition has begun work with Facing Addictions, which is a national organization who already have in place a communities project. We have a follow-up call on Monday with the person who is in charge of the communities project from Facing Addiction. Facing Addiction, very briefly, and we're running late. In 2017, there was a pilot program of the community project that was created and implemented and assisted communities around the United States by Facing Addiction. And in 2016, the Facing Addiction opened an application process for a pilot community project, which for four months, they accepted applications and they had 54 applications requesting some assistance. And it's through federal grant money that this has been made possible, it's no cost to us or to any of these other communities. Of those 54 applications, there were 15 communities who were selected to participate. And these are again, communities from around the United States. At the time last year, we did not have any within Texas. Over the course of the project, Facing Addiction hosted a community organizing training in each community and they're continuing to work with each community on helping them to attain specific goals such as opening recovery community centers, working with law enforcement community, expanding access to prevention practices in public school settings, and opening sober living homes, and many more. And the coordination and the cooperative efforts and campaigning carried out by local residents to promote the interest of their community. And with this communities project, they came in and went into those communities and began to build a community of recovery through training. And last week, the Recovery Community Coalition of Kerrville has decided to move forward and accept the help of Facing Addiction to come in and began to prepare us to be a true coalition with a, with a support system and a proven method. And we are one of few communities within the state of Texas that have been accepted into this program. And in 2018, Facing Addiction will train 1,000 organizers in communities across the United States. We believe this is the next critical step in moving the issues important to our cause to the front of the agenda in order to train these organizers. Facing Addiction will visit 25 different communities and work with these communities to do the following. Host a training on community organizing skills, develop goals aimed at raising community awareness, identify additional goals necessary in each community, design strategies and tactics in order to attain these goals with ongoing assistance from Facing Addiction. With all of this, in bringing hope and help to the one in three households impacted by addiction and all of those who might be in the future, with open hearts and minds by ending the stigma, shame, and misinformation around addiction.
Can I ask you a question, you said one and three?
That is, that is a number on a national basis. We can begin to help loved ones currently suffering to get the support that they need to live full lives in recovery. We have a tentative meeting or a date currently for August 30th to participate. I'm giving you a heads up, you will be invited to come to this. This is a community effort. It's an extension, receiving help with the Recovery Community Coalition. We were making headway, we were gathering data from EMS, fire, Kerrville Police Department. We have a strong, solid board on hand now with a great vast variety of the education and skill sets where we can finally begin moving forward. We had some difficulty in the beginning, yes, because we were attempting to do things which we had not the ability or the knowledge or the expertise in. When we refocused our efforts and broke down these, the purpose itself and began looking at these things individually and how we can support recovery here in Kerrville. In Kerr County alone, there were two inpatient treatment facilities. In the counties touching Kerr County, there were two, three, four others. There are a total of six in the area. Kerrville is the prime hub of the Hill Country in this, you know, in this region. So how can we better support the services for those who come here to begin their new life getting better with mental health and substance use disorder? They need some service, some follow-up afterwards, and that's what we're looking at helping to provide.
Given the, kind of the lateness of the hour, we've still got another group to hear from. But I want to say, thank you, because this is a great presentation.
And that was the end of it too.
All right, that was a great presentation and gives us good info and I'm, I'm very encouraged having seen the Recovery Coalition from the beginning to now. Looks good, looks good. August 30th.
We will be putting into, again, this is very early in, in stages of planning, but we will be making announcements as we move forward. So we are not becoming stagnant, we are making, taking action.
Good, good. I was, I want to say one thing and then Steve Pauller's going to come to speak. But you elevated one of your members tonight in the introduction. You said that Dr. Kendall Young is counsel at the high school, which would mean she has a law degree too.
Not counsel like that, counselor.
All right, all right, thank you, Dale.
This, this pilot community project, how did they, were these, these places applying for it or how did they get identified?
There is an application process for those communities to reach out, to place an application with. Because of our personal resources that we have already had and because Kerrville is Kerrville, we were, we moved right through the process very quickly.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Any other questions?
Thank you. Thank you for your leadership.
Very much for your time.
All right.
Good evening, mayor and council, I appreciate your time. I want to thank you for your continued investment in the future of Kerrville in this way. I want to thank Mr. Hobbie for his service originally when we formed, he bumped along with us originally. I want to thank Chief Smith for being along with us on the ride now, he's been invaluable. I'm Chief Operating Officer Peterson Health, I'm a 337 Gallup Trail. And what's in it for us, what's in it for the community to do this? When I come into this, it's not an official vision statement, but it's my personal reason for participating and that is to see the recovery community as part of a healthy community. There are so many folks here who have some participation in the life of recovery, whether for themselves or with their family. And the more that we can be the community that supports them and has the expectation that if you have substance use disorder, there is help, there is hope, there's a way of getting through and we're a place where that can happen because it's everywhere. We're in a world where many communities are struggling with meth, with opioids, with other manufactured substances that can't even be identified because the people who create the chemicals are very crafty in how they do it. And so the idea that we have as a community the expectation that people will participate in a healthier lifestyle and will participate in recovery is really important to our future as a community because if we don't deal with it constructively, we'll have to deal with the debris that comes afterwards. So a lot of what I saw in the, in letters to the editor, had to do with fear and a lack of knowledge. And I think when we broke that down as a committee, what we attacked and what we intend to continue working against is fear and lack of knowledge and getting people out there. And from my point of view, sitting on the committee, it's more important for me to be supportive of those who are in recovery who are taking the lead. And many people on the committee are in recovery, they are taking the lead, they are taking the responsibility. They know things that I don't know. I've 25 years in hospital administration, 10 years as an ICU nurse before that. I learned a lot from these people every time I sit down with them. So they're a great source of knowledge, they're a great inspiration to me in a lot of ways. A lot of education two-way, both between the people in recovery and the, and the police, fire, EMS. It's, it's a tremendous effort there and it's a tremendous learning curve for all of us. And everyone involved has been committed to serving those people who want to do better, who want to improve their lives. And there's so many people who want to do it, they're imperfect, just as everybody else in the room, especially me, is imperfect. But there are so many who are trying, who are trying to make a difference in their lives and trying to help other people who are along with them on the ride. So I want to thank you for your continued investment, for your participation, many of you have participated in many ways. And thank you to the people on the committee who've done this tremendous work and I'm honored to serve alongside them. Thank you.
Thank you very much, thank you. All right, no action needed on that, but thank you again for the Recovery Coalition and what you are doing, what you will do. Thank you. Jeffrey, would you like to give us a report on Playhouse 2000?
I'd be pleased. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members, thank you so much for having me here tonight. I know it's been a long night already, anybody want a seventh inning stretch, anything? I am going to be as brief as I can as I go through this little report, I appreciate the opportunity to be here. Please stop me if you have any questions as I go along, we're going to talk a little bit about what kinds of attendance and, and income and expense and those kinds of things we've had over the last year and a half, going back to about 2017. So wow, those are little tiny letters on this screen. This, I don't think I need to read all of this to you, but some highlights of our production activity since 2017. There's some names there of some people who have appeared on our stage, the Letterman, Crystal Gale, Ricky Skaggs, Crowder, Carmen, we've got some important folks coming up soon as well. Those are some of the things that we do that kind of grab the general community interest. But I also wanted to highlight a couple of additional things there. The 2017 Young People's Performances Series, which is a series in which we bring young people to the theater free of charge to see events that we sponsor, had more than, well, nearly 5,000 young people who saw that during 2017. The Symphony of the Hills during 2017 saw several thousand people attend their events, including about 1,400 that saw their Young People's Concert. The, goodness. Fundraising events at the facility raised a little bit more than $100,000 oh, just last year. So there's a lot of things going on and I don't want to waste your time by going through the rest of this list, but suffice it to say, there's a lot of activity and a lot of it relates to things that we do to provide access for the community to events that otherwise might not happen. And that's probably one of our major goals. Production activity by the numbers. We had 92 events in 2017. We had 100 and, well, almost 200 lit nights. We call those lit nights. The total face value of tickets was approaching $500,000 last year. That's slightly down from where it was in the prior year. And the total visits to the facility, which includes everything that happens there, not just paid events, but voting and, and people who are attending for a cocktail party, was a little bit more than 45,000 people last year. So far in 2018 and as we project into the rest of this year, we're looking at expanding all of those numbers. We believe that 2018 will see close to 100 events this year. Face values will go up slightly over the, what we had during 2017. Our lit nights are expected to go up and our, our total attendance across all events, we believe will hit about 55,000 people this year. Those are exciting numbers for us. We're very pleased to be making those things possible. Let me tell you just a little bit about some things that we have coming up the rest of this year, which I hope that you will take note of and possibly take advantage of. Yeah, that's Lori Morgan concert. Jeez, I should have put on my glasses before I came up here. I'm sorry. Lori Morgan will be here near the end of August on the 24th. She promises to be a sellout. She's a major country artist and we're real pleased to have her here. In September, the Callow Performances Series will start up again. We'll be doing our series of events that takes place across the winter. We're opening that series with Ballet San Antonio. We're very excited to be having them here. We just had an event on the 21st where we announced all of our series. And so far we've sold about $10,000 worth of tickets just in the first three days. People are very excited about those events. I wanted to highlight in October, the Callow Performances Series will continue. And the Symphony of the Hills will launch there next season, which also takes place in the winter months. And then as we head off into the rest of the year, the Texas Association of Private and Parochial Schools State One Act Play Festivals are hosted at the Callow Theater. That brings in the neighborhood of 1,000 young people to Curville who are coming from schools, private schools and, and a lot of Catholic schools and other parochial schools from across the state. And they do their highest level of participation in the One Act Play Festival in the same way that UIL does. We host that for taps. It's a major event, brings a lot of people to Curville. We have several other things going on through the end of the year and I won't go through all of them right now. I feel like it's probably best to just keep moving. Sure, go right ahead.
Your October lineup, that's a pretty good contrast there. Hank Williams and Mozart in the same.
Exactly. Yeah, we've got a wide variety. That's, that's kind of one of the goals. We want to make sure that there's always something for somebody. So we, we try to make sure. We are, Vincent and I talked last year when he was our representative. We talked about looking for ways to encourage younger attendance and we're, we are working hard on some of those ideas that you and I talked about. Nothing has come yet, but we're working on an act that I think is going to be exciting.
Like a, like a silent disco?
Haven't worked on that one. Exactly, yeah. Our development activity, this is, this is what we do to raise money in addition to our earned income through renting the building and selling tickets. So our individual donors in 2017, you can see the numbers there. And I'm, I'm going to go through these a little bit because I really want to call your attention to the third number because it's going to come back on the next slide. Business support continues to kind of grow. We're working really hard to try and develop a level of support from the business community that leads to sponsorship. We feel like it's a real win-win situation that businesses can get their name out in front of the community and, and associate themselves with some great projects. So we're working hard on that. Foundation grants have become a situation for us. You'll notice the numbers there. And as we look at where we project 2018 to end up as compared to 2017, I came to Playhouse 2000 in 2012 and we have been very fortunate in the years since that we have been able to secure some pretty significant grants from organizations like the Hill Country Charity Ball and foundations like the Coates Foundation. But a lot of that support was one-time support. And what we are finding is that as we head into 2018, we have not secured the kind of operational support from the foundation community that we have been blessed with in the past. And that, we're going to, we're going to see in a minute how that projection for 2018 is going to kind of follow through to the bottom line. So as we look at our financial activity for 2017 and moving up into 2018, what I've indicated here are, are net income levels. We are, we're looking pretty hard at having two consecutive years of expenses exceeding revenue by between 4% and 5% of budget. That's a pretty significant number for an organization like ours. We, we started the 2016 fiscal year with about $100,000 in the bank. And I'm projecting right now that we're going to finish the 2018 fiscal year with about $30,000 in the bank. That makes it hard for us to make plans as we move forward. And we're going to talk a little bit about some of the things that we're doing to try and change that number. I think that's all of this slide. There it goes. All right. One of the reasons that Playhouse 2000 continues to struggle in terms of operational cash on hand is that a significant portion of our budget goes to, a significant portion of our unearned income goes to supporting the actual facility costs of the Callow Theater. And I don't want to run all of these numbers except to say that what we, what I've done with this little slide is to compare the direct income related to the Callow Theater and its programming. Taking everything that comes directly to the Callow Theater. If an event happened there, it includes that ticket money. If, and, and it includes all of the city support. It includes contributions that were made specific to the Callow. And then we've assigned also direct expenses. So that direct ticket income, I've assigned the cost of bringing that act here, those kinds of things. If you take a look at all of those numbers, what we find is that there's a pretty significant shortfall of revenue when compared to the expenses of keeping that building doing what it does. And it does it very well, but it's a very expensive place in which to do it. And like a lot of organizations who run performing arts centers across the country, we find that we're investing a lot of money in making sure that the building does everything that it needs to do in terms of things like keeping the electricity moving and all those kinds of things. So what we find is that there's been an average of between 30 and $70,000 of unearned revenue dedicated to keeping the building operating sufficiently. And what we have heard from some of our major funders is that they, they want to support programming. They want less to support the electric bill. So I wanted to bring this to your attention just because it's kind of part of the analysis that I've been doing over the last year. We are in the process of developing our five-year plan from 2019 through 23, and this is part of the analysis that went into that discussion. There we go. That business plan, we have laid out for ourselves five major objectives. And we're in the process of working out exactly how we're going to approach these objectives. But our objectives are to increase our impact on our community in terms of our artistic, what, what we offer to the community. We also want to increase our economic value to the community. We, we know that by generating the kinds of entertainment product that we do, we are bringing a significant number of people from outside of Curville into Curville, and that has economic impact that we value. And we want to increase that as often, as much as we possibly can. We also have objectives to strengthen the stability of our corporation. And one of the things that we've talked about there is that we are, in January of 2020, and it's nine o'clock. I apologize for having you here at nine o'clock. In roughly January of 2020, the operational agreement that was signed between the City of Curville and Playhouse 2000 will reach its first expiration date. It's not going away. There's an automatic renewal for it. But what we would like to do is between now and then, work with city staff to develop an operating agreement that more closely resembles the way the building actually operates today. A 20-year-old agreement does not address sufficiently some of the things that are going on now. So we want to take a look at some ways in which we can request a little bit more support from the city in terms of things like maintaining and repairing the building. And we can ask for a little bit more help with things that are directly related to the, the facility that the city owns. And we can dedicate ourselves to making sure that the programming is doing what we want it to do, which is making Curville a great place to both live and visit. And I hope that that's part of the, the agreement that we're able to come up with soon. We also hope with our objectives to maintain sufficient staff and to maintain our facilities. So those are the things that we're working toward. I appreciate the chance to be in front of you today. I, I, like I say, I wanted to get through it as quickly as I could so as not to burden you with, with excess words. But I'd be more than happy to answer any questions you might have about things or any comments you might have for me.
Well, I had one. Out of the 55,000 you said that would attend by calculations this year?
Yes.
Out of that many, how many are comped or, like the schools, we have a lot of in-kind school, we, we bring the school children in by the busloads for a week or two sometimes.
I can't answer that.
You think it's a percentage?
Yeah, well, yes. What I can tell you is that of the total attendance, of total event attendance in 2017, that, that means I'm separating out meetings and parties and voting and other activities that are not, and not event-specific. Of that number, of the total number, a third was people who were coming to an event for which they didn't buy a ticket.
And I mean, I'm applauding that. I'm not.
Yeah, we, we feel very strongly that not everything we do, that many things that we do are, are designed to support the community. So when Curville ISD calls and they want to have their end-of-the-year event for their teachers, they pay for us to have staff on hand, but they don't pay for the electricity and the toilet paper and the insurance. That, that part of the rental is waived for them because we believe that's in support of the community. We have some obligations that are part of our management agreement. When the Women's Veterans Association has their annual, I'm, I'm sorry, the, the Veterans Administration has the annual salute to women veterans. They use the building for two days at absolutely no cost because those events are important to the community. So those are the things that we work really hard to make sure that we are supporting. And I think there are ways also that the city can feel like they are supporting the community.
Good point.
I, I would say a couple of things.
Sure.
One, I really don't know why I missed the Crystal Gale concert. Her, her song, "When I Dream," I just, I love it.
She was wonderful.
Yeah, and I did, I did put down Lori Morgan on the 24th of August, so. But something that I continue to see is you're a vital part of the whole thing of people being attracted to a community where there are cultural opportunities. And I think that is more a factor than sometimes we realize. You know, if they come into a small town and a small town's got cultural opportunities, that is really icing on the cake. So I think that, I, I, it'd be hard to quantify, but it's important.
In addition to the fact that we get people from out of town to come here and buy dinner and see a show.
You're right.
And people who will come here and stay overnight and see a show. I think there's also a significant benefit to the people who live here, who are able to take advantage of the fact that we are here. And, but what is surprising about that is of the ticketed events that I mentioned, of the people who bought a ticket, 55% are from within Curville. 45% of the people who buy a ticket and come here are coming from someplace outside of 78028. That means that, that's roughly 20,000 people last year, give or take, who got in their car and drove 15 miles and came here and probably had dinner and, at least. So those are significant numbers of folks who are making a visit here specifically because Curville is the only place that has a theater like this one. Well, in a community of this size, it's the only one in Texas, period. But we are also the, the place to see this kind of activity that wouldn't occur within 100 miles of us without our being here.
Yeah, I, I would say one of the things that, you can't register it with any data, but there, it's kind of what you hinted at. It's one of those things, I don't care if I attend a show or not. It's one of those things, it's nice to know that the town I live in has the place.
Yes.
So that's, that's a, that's a big part of it. One of the things you mentioned though, you said something about donors want to support, they would rather support
Yeah.
programming than operations. Is that because they want to, they want to actually give less dollars or is it because they really want to direct it to program?
It's, it's the idea that people want to see what their money is doing. The idea for certainly foundations, foundations are very clear. We're going to, we're going to make something, we're going to give you money because we want to see at the other end how many people you benefited with it.
Right.
But people are the same way. They want to say, I'll give you $100 if that means that the kid's costume is $100 better than it was before. And so individual donors are also very program-oriented. When we ask people, you know, to make a contribution in support of the Callow Theater, what I'm able to say to them is, your donation makes it possible for us to bring in Ballet San Antonio because it's not as attractive an ask to say, your donation makes it possible for us to pay the insurance bill.
Right. So, so what I was getting at though is, and I, I get that. They want to, they want to actually see what it is. But is it, is it really hard to get them to understand that I can bring in this, the ballet, but if I don't have the lights turned on, then I can't put them on? So kind of getting it partnered up.
It's a, it, I, I believe that the ask is more difficult along those lines. And, and we certainly, I don't think I've been shy. You can tell me if I'm wrong. I don't think I've been ever shy about standing in front of people and saying, look, if I can't turn the lights on, none of this happens, so help me with this. You know, that's, that's part of the deal, but I know what's more successful.
Jeffrey, the grants seem to be down a great deal. Is, is there a reason for that?
Absolutely there is. Yeah, the foundations very clearly said, you didn't ask us for a specific program. You didn't tell me how many people would be on the other end of that program. What you asked for was operational money. Well, that's frankly where I need it. My ask fell on less than receptive ears this year. I think there are probably a lot of reasons for it, but at least one part of it is that the foundations locally feel like things should be sorted out a little better in your operations so that we can, we can focus on getting you to rural populations and, you know, the, the very specific asks you make from foundations. Children, underserved communities. That's what we're, that's what we're really about.
Is that a nice way of saying that the, the city asks you to go get the money from the foundations, foundations say go get it from the city?
Yes, sir. That's exactly correct. You're very perceptive.
And I will just say, Jeffrey, I've, I've watched him in action now for the last year and a half. I was on the board before I became a council member. And we do an awful lot of fundraising. We do an awful lot of planning and trying to come up with another unique way to gain some funds. We're actually currently promoting the Suzy Kell, the musical, in case you want to go see some really great youth talent. That's this weekend, Friday, Saturday and Sunday matinee. Suzy Bogus last Saturday was fantastic and we had a great dinner before and it, it's just a great thing to have literally five minutes from home. I don't have to pay $100 or drive into San Antonio and it's a wonderful evening. So it, it's not, not hard for me to sell for the small amounts. It's the keeping the lights on and the insurance paid and that would be real helpful.
I'll just mention, we, we have rough figures, 60% of the income for the entire year comes from earned income. Ticket sales, building rentals, advertising sales, a couple of other things. That leaves 40% of our total expenditure that has to come from unearned contributed income. 11% of that is our city arrangement. About 5% of that comes from the city. Another, almost 30% comes from individual donors. So they do pony up. We appreciate them and we just, we want. Uh, we appreciate them and we just, uh, we want to keep moving forward.
You've probably never turned away a private donor, have you?
I can't recall ever turning.
That, that means something to me, just so those of you who actually understand what I'm asking.
I apologize.
No, that's okay.
Yes, any other questions? I'm really, really pleased to have the time to talk to you tonight.
We just need to be, we're so, should be so proud of it. I mean, people come and just can't believe what kind of a facility.
Both audiences and artists complement the facility, and, and you should be very proud to honor.
Yeah, good, good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for your good work.
Thank you for all your work.
Okay. Uh, I am going to suggest we move the city manager's report up to now before we go into executive session, but I'm curious, who are you on the front row that have your name tags, and you have been here so patiently, but you haven't gotten up and spoke up? Just observers. Well, you're patient observers, thank you, thank you.
So coming around is the monthly CIP report, and, um, while it's coming around, I do want to mention something else, and that is, I want to call out, um, our deputy city manager here, EA Hoppy, who, not only is he a new, uh, executive board member of the Texas City Management Association, which represents the whole state, but he's also a brand-new credentialed manager with the International City County Managers Association, which is an honor that very few managers achieve, even city managers, and so we're really blessed to have EA here with that caliber of talent, so.
Congratulations.
So on your, on your report, just, just a few items to point out. Singing Wind Drive, um, we are on schedule there to, to complete that project in September. I know it's very disruptive, but people have been very patient, uh, and it's a, it's a very big project, so, uh, moving along nicely there. The parking garage maintenance repairs, we, we have a pre-construction meeting on, uh, August third, and then we'll get, uh, underway shortly thereafter on making those repairs. So there's going to be a little bit of, uh, fruit basket turnover in the parking garage in terms of moving people around, depending on which floor we're working on, so we'll get, keep you all posted on that. Uh, number thirteen, the Aquatics Center feasibility study, um, just, uh, to let you know, that's going to be, you know, up to six months to complete that, and, uh, we're now on, um, you know, underway with that effort. On the nineteen, I'm sorry, on number nineteen, on August, I think it's the twenty-first, uh, is your, your workshop in August, and so the subject of that meeting, as you all requested, would be the tax increment reinvestment zone with the consultant coming back and doing kind of a, a TERS one oh one, and we'll invite certainly the community to, to listen in on that. And then finally, uh, item number twenty-two, the RFP for public-private housing. We did have a pre-proposal conference yesterday, we did have several attendees, we're very encouraged. Um, it was not mandatory, so there could be others that are interested, and we're trying to, uh, beat the bushes a little bit to try to find out who might be interested.
What, what does several mean? Like, how many people, how many places showed up?
Uh, well, it's hard to tell who was the primary and who was subs, but I was, I know there was at least three primaries.
Okay.
Um, and then proposals are due August twenty-ninth, so that's, that's all on schedule. And, uh, Mr. Mayor, that's all I have on the, the CIP report.
All right, um, in regard to board appointments.
Hey, hang on, because I actually had a question about the city manager's report, because I thought he was going to say something about it. So what's the, the status of the Animal Control Services thing?
Same, same thing I mentioned yesterday at, at your workshop, it, no change. I, I, I had a meeting with the county judge and the, uh, county commissioner, um, we agreed on how to proceed forward in negotiations, and so now we're starting those discussions.
Okay, so if, uh, but based on what you were telling us, so their, their amendment that they were proposing is being sort of reclassified as not truly an amendment? They're gonna just?
No, I think that's all going to be open to negotiation and, and clarification, if anything else, about what those mean. The, the main thing that we need right now is more data, which we don't have any at all.
But you did tell them they can change the hours.
Under our current agreement, they are, they've already done that once, and so they could do it again if they so choose, chose to. They want to offer more evenings, and they also want to, also want to offer more time on the weekends, which our current agreement does not prohibit that.
So if it doesn't prohibit it, what does it do? That's, that's kind of where I was going. If, if they're allowed to change the, the hours of the facility that were specifically written into the interlocal, what, what sort of teeth or purpose do we have of the agreement as it's been approved? The inter, the current interlocal agreement, if they can change stuff in it, what's the purpose of it?
Well, it outlines what kind of services are going to be provided, um, you know, what, what, what they'll be providing us in terms of patrol and, and other services that we didn't have previously.
But they don't have to do them.
Yes, they do.
Okay.
It doesn't, what's not, what's not defined is, we do have some basic hours, but then there's a clause in there that says, and other hours that the, the administrator may, may authorize or, or change. And so that's what they already did, one month into the agreement, they asked to modify their hours, and they could anyway, and so we tried that for a while. And keep in mind that this, this first-year agreement was all about, let's try it and see how it works.
Yeah.
So that's why that flexibility was built into the contract.
Okay, in regard to board appointments, are we going to handle the, uh, appointment to the Recovery Community Coalition here?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, who's going to speak to that?
I will, Mayor. Uh, Recovery Community Coalition, we have one term due to expire December thirty-first, two thousand and eighteen, due to a resignation of the member who held the position seven, representing the Hill Country Mental Health and Development Disabilities Centers. The resolution creating the board states that at least one member on the committee shall fill that position seven, which is the representative of the Hill Country Mental Health Development Disability Centers. The interview team were council members, Vogel and Eichner.
Okay, is there a recommendation?
I have made a motion, uh, to recommend, uh, the individual, uh, Kim Williams.
Kim Williams.
Yes.
I'll second.
Okay, just for clarity, she's, she's the only one that's actually qualified for this particular spot, right?
That's what I was going to add.
Yeah.
Your recommendation is to appoint her?
Yes. Okay, yes.
Okay, let's vote on that.
I'm sorry, just for clarification, just briefly, I'm, if I'm not mistaken, the actual...
Yeah. You'll come up here.
My name's Kimber Falkenberg, I'm at eleven hundred. If I'm not mistaken, the language in whatever you call it that set up the coalition to begin with, it, it says that, my phone is ringing, sorry. Um, I believe it says that two or more individuals from each of the suggested types of categories could participate in this coalition. There's been a misunderstanding in language that I continue to hear in the community and the coalition of it's just two, but I believe the language is actually two or more.
Right, so that's not really, the, the, the actual issue is that we have to have at least one from each of the, the one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight type, and, and the person coming off is a number seven.
But what I'm saying is, I believe that more than one person applied, and I'm hearing...
They did, but what, what we're left with is, uh, so Mr. Robinson is resigning, so that's leaving us a hole in the MHDD slot. So we don't have anybody on the coalition at this point.
No applicants.
That would be in that, and only one of the applicants in this most recent past, uh, actually work at MHDD, so that's the only one there. Now, to say that, it, um, we also, as you mentioned earlier, we haven't addressed the fact that we have two slots that are council member slots, that are no longer council member slots, so those are kind of open.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, but we didn't put it on the agenda that we're filling those tonight, so that's why those other people, you were one of them, are still...
I am not one of them, thank you very, but just to clarify.
I thought you were, oh, okay.
Yeah.
In any case, um, those two slots will, I don't know what agenda...
They're posted for the next agenda.
Okay, so there you go.
They're on the delay of next agenda.
This still doesn't, however, my point would be that it, it could be that there could be seven slots available on the coalition, because the statement isn't there are only two, there in fact are at least two.
Oh, there's, there, isn't there a maximum number of fifteen? Isn't that what it was?
I don't think it actually says that.
Yes, someplace it did, it said...
It does.
And at least one member from each of those decisions.
Does the language actually say only thirteen? Does it say limited to?
No.
I don't believe it does. I'm sorry?
The number of members is part...
I understand what the number of current members are. I, I guess what I'm saying is, if, if people have applied, who have an interest in participating and benefit the coalition as a whole, and as a concerned community member, I'm, I'm wondering, why would we prevent them if, because, because the language from the city that was voted on doesn't actually limit the number of people?
Okay.
It gives a suggestion of where they might come from.
I think what we can do with that, okay, the agenda item is only listing that we're appointing one slot tonight, so if, if you want to have that discussion about whether we should increase the maximum number, um, or, or revisit whether we have a maximum, right? Um, we can put that on a future agenda, but we couldn't even appoint these people tonight because we only posted that we're appointing one spot, if that makes sense.
Okay, that clears, that clarifies confusion, because my understanding after attending meetings was that there was going to be more than one spot available and assigned tonight.
Yeah.
So I think that's where the confusion comes from.
Yeah.
It was, it was presented in the coalition meetings that there were multiple spots available, and that would be happening today, and now I'm hearing there's not, and there's only one, and I'm like, wait, there's confusion. What's that?
There are going to be two more slots that are open, but it's posted for the next, probably posted for the next.
And if you want to have us revisit that maximum number thing, that would be of, an agenda item that you would want to get, uh, put on there.
Yeah, I don't know if I, I don't know if I do, I'd just like to verify exactly what does it say.
Right, okay, all right.
Yeah, thank you, thank you for answering the question.
I believe we have...
So there's a motion and a second up, right?
Yeah, we got, we got a motion and a second. Uh, let's vote on that. Okay, it's five oh. Now, uh, the appointment to the Planning and Zoning Commission should be in executive session, right?
Doesn't have to be, but you'll need to take a vote to do that.
Yeah, I would, I would make the motion that that appointment to P and Z would be a part of our executive session.
A second. Well, you...
Under what, yeah?
State the section.
You what?
You have to state the section if it's on the agenda, though.
Oh, okay, in the executive session, uh, five five one dot oh seven four. All right, then, uh, we got a motion second, let's vote on that. All right. We are now moving into executive session. Where did our audience go?
Home to bed.
Yeah.
Okay. Oh, I put my finger away, I'm sorry.
Executive session has ended, and we are back in session as a council. Uh, do I hear a motion in regard to appointment to the P and Z?
I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
Um, I'd like to make a motion that we, um, put Ms. Barbara Duel in the spot of, uh, being vacated by Mr. Seigerman on the P and Z.
All right, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. So this is appointing, uh...
I'm sorry, Duel.
Barbara Duel.
Yeah, sorry.
Barbara Duel.
I mumbled it, right, sorry.
Uh, to P and Z, okay? Let's take a vote. Okay, it is three two, uh, with three noes. We have another motion.
I make a, uh, Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we move Tricia Byram to, from alternate to the, uh, regular, uh, P and Z board.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, second, motion second. All in favor of that motion, moving Byram to the, uh, P and Z regular slot? If you'll vote. Okay, and the motion carries. Uh, is there, is there any miscellaneous item before we go?
For future agenda, you mean?
Well, future agenda or, or miscellaneous.
I've heard some complaints about the, um, cell phone ordinance signs coming into town that the print's real small, and it's not really, it doesn't really stand out, maybe we can discuss that or look into that. Because if it's about actual safety, I want people to see it, like, oh, we can't use our phones here. Uh, the one I went and looked at was on sixteen coming into town just past the, uh...
By the stadium.
No, the one I saw was out there, right on the city limits, um, right on the north side of I-ten.
Okay, we'll look at that, but I think we're following the traffic code.
We are, um, we understand your comments about the small print, we, we are meeting the state statute, uh, as far, but we, we understand your concern. Okay.
Yeah, because you, you can see the word prohibited, but everything else that's prohibited, you can't really read it. We are an old town, but, you know.
Okay.
Yeah.
And the one item that was tabled tonight, how will we address that? Will we just put it on the next agenda, or do we?
Just leave it.
Well, it was, it was deferred to an uncertain date, so it's until one of you all asks to bring it back on a specific agenda.
I would be requesting it come back at the next meeting.
You, you are requesting?
I would agree with that.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, so it'll come back next, next, uh, meeting, okay? All right. We are adjourned at nine forty-four, fifty-seven, fifty-nine.